Good evening. Welcome to our regular meeting for the Rancho Cordova City Council. I ask our city clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Terry.
Here.
Councilmember Budge.
Here.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sander.
Here.
Mayor McGarvey.
Here, thank you. I ask your city clerk to announce the meeting video recording and playback schedules.
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel, on Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air on Wednesday, May 22 at 7:00 PM and Sunday, May 26 at 9:00 AM on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available to check out from any library branch. A copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department. And a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna ask Maria Alms to lead us in the pledge. And then I invite the audience to remain standing for invocation with Julia Stanbach from the United Methodist Church.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Well, then I'm gonna ask you all to hold in a moment of silence and think of some of the people that you know, some who have been lost, some of the people, for instance, in paradise, and some of the veterans that you know have passed on. Thank you. Okay onward to our presentations. I'm gonna call on Janet Zeller and Sean Harrison from Soilborne Farms.
Good evening, and would like to thank you very much, the mayor and council members and city manager, for allowing us to take a little bit of the time tonight to tell you more about the story and journey of Soilborne Farms, especially here in Rancho Cordova. And before we get started, our plan is to do a brief PowerPoint presentation that Sean will walk you through. And if we play our cards right, there should be time for a few questions. But I really wanna start with gratitude, just to really thank all of you and the staff for your continued interest, encouragement, and support of our nonprofit organization and what we're trying to do. We've been working on this project for over 18 years, started very humbly in a backyard. And we have a vision that we often say will last, could last many lifetimes. But we also realize that the work we're doing, our intention is for it to serve the families and the children for many generations here in Rancho Cordova. So we are excited. The whole reason what drives all of us, or our team and especially us, is serving the community and advocating for health and food access and to really enjoy this amazing treasure that we have right in our neighborhood. So, thank you again.
Okay, well, I'm gonna try to be quick tonight, 'cause I know there's a lot on the agenda. But for those in the audience that have not, are not familiar with Soilborne, hopefully this'll orient you as well. On the opening slide, this is one of the, really, one of the prettiest pictures that we've been able to capture of the American River Ranch. The ranch itself dates back to the 1840s, and it really is one of the jewels, not only of Rancho Cordova, but we believe it's one of the places that would be hard to replicate anywhere in the country. The ranch is 55 acres, and it fronts the American River. It's next to Hagan Community Park, and it's the home of Soilborne Farms. Arrows? Where do I point? Anywhere? There we go.
Indeed, that was the off button.
It's hard over. I pushed the arrow. So, we're gonna walk you through, very quickly, kind of where we are, where we've been, and where we're going. And the idea is really an invitation to the community and the council to go on this journey with us. What started as a ranch in 2005 that was not accessible to the public till today, so just over a decade, we've basically kind of renovated the existing facility and completed a master plan for the site. So, over the next several minutes, I'm gonna take you through some images tied to some of our programs of what exists now, and then some of the things that we have proposed moving forward. In this image, just to note, because we won't be coming back to it, is the, the buildings in color will be new construction at the American River Ranch. Okay, I'm gonna try the arrow. There we go.
So, this is an overview of our mission and our goals. And I just wanna speak for a moment about the top line there, the connecting food, health, and the environment. And as I mentioned, we started as a small, little urban farm with a huge vision. And it's grown to date to be eight interconnected programs. So what I mean by that is, we were really trying to fill a need. Both of us have a background as children of having a lot of illness, and also really committed to protecting the environment, appreciating the natural world. And through that, we want all of our programs to really interpret and help people to make the connection between food, health, and the environment. When we first started, over 18 years ago, when we'd say this, people, "What does that mean?" And as I think most of you know now, that's, we're all making those connections. We know that what we eat, it's related to how we're taking care of our soil, and that affects our health. And one quote that I always really appreciated was Theodore Roosevelt said, "What we do to our soil, we do to ourselves." And that's just been a guiding principle. In terms of our programs, we're really committed to serving all generations. So we have programs for little, little, tiny ones, and adults of all ages. And we love the connection of intergenerational. We love to have seniors working in the garden with the youth, and just making it a place where families can really come and enjoy nature and learn together and have fun, and also pick up really basic skills to help them have a healthier life.
Okay. If you haven't been there before, or the folks in the audience haven't been there before, this is one of the treasures of our community. The American River Ranch, as I stated, is 55 acres. And over the last decade, we've completed quite a few projects at the site, moving it from a pretty dilapidated facility, but moving it and into a really functional site, serving thousands of people each year in our community. The farm is at the core of the project. We have about 15 acres of land in orchards, field crops, gardens, and 10 acres of restored creek. The key program associated with the farm is our farmer and gardener training. We actually, this year, have two veterans that are participating in the training program. And we focus on that target demographic quite a bit with the training program. Over the years, we've trained 50 farmers that are actually, most of which are still farming. And this is addressing one of the biggest issues in our, in our country right now, which is the aging population of farmers and the folks that are growing our food. The farm also is represent, a living, kind of breathing place where it's a place of hands-on training for learning to steward the earth, grow food. And to that end, you can get food from our farm stand. We glean about 38,000 pounds and grow over 100,000 pounds of food each year for the This is a signature piece. Some of you may have followed this for the last 10 years that it took to complete it, but it used to be called Clifton's Drain, named after the family that farmed the property when I was a kid, and before that, when my parents were growing up here in Rancho Cordova. It is restored into a 10-acre habitat that, in good years, you'll see salmon coming up into the stream. So it went from a gunite-lined ditch with graffiti to probably one of the most thriving wildlife corridors along the American River. It also helps to clean water before it goes into the American River, and it's serving as a very powerful outdoor classroom for our youth program. The youth gardens and garden spaces at the farm serve over 7,000 kids each year. As you know, we have a school garden program that operates in Rancho Cordova, also in other communities. Those students come out to the farm, where we inspire them and hope that they'll take those lessons and learnings and bring them onto their own school, into their own homes, into their own communities. It really, the youth program as a whole, is the centerpiece for our organization. We have during school, after school, and summer programs for our young people. We also have completed the renovation of what used to be a duplex that was served as staff housing, is now our office. We've renovated the schoolhouse. And currently, we offer over 150 adult classes each year in topics ranging from gardening to wellness, to environmental studies. And those served over 2,000 adults. We also have a really robust volunteer program. As you can see in the slide here, this is Intel. They come out and, they actually committed to 1,000 hours to us this last year. This is just one of the many business partners, VSP, others, Aerojet Rocketdyne. There's a number of Rancho Cordova businesses that spend their time out to help us to steward this site.
So that would be Intel outside?
There you go. That's good. But they've been with us for quite some time. They're a great community partner. We also completed a renovation of our existing equipment barn, and completed the construction of an outdoor classroom space, which really are used to house events and do dinners on the farm, and classes and workshops with the community. Last year, we had over 15,000, actually it was closer to 20,000 folks that visited the farm. This was actually our first new construction at the site, and the city of Rancho Cordova assisted us with the planning and design of this facility. It serves as a marker of what we'd like the site to look like moving forward. So we're gonna move into the next phase, and this is where I would like for you guys to kind of perk your ears up, because this is where we're gonna really look to the city and some of the other, other community partners to move us into this phase. The American River Ranch is permanently protected. It's a community treasure. It's a, it's a site that's gonna live on way past that I'll be on this earth or any of us in this room. We consider it a legacy project, and we feel like if we can invest in this place, it will be really the, probably the singular most important resource in our community related to food and agriculture. And it's right here in our, in our town. So we've got some ambitious projects planned. We estimate that it's gonna be about a $10 million total project over the next five years to move us from where we're at to where we'd like to be. The first one, and the city has assisted us with the planning on this, is a new entrance into the facility. For increased mobility and accessibility, we've gotta have two-lane traffic coming in, and we need to have a parking lot. I'd show you a picture, but about a month ago, we had a bus pull in and took a right instead of a left, and they sunk right into our dirt parking lot and had to be pulled out by a tow truck. So, you know, there's some simple things, not sexy projects, but practical things that the site needs that it never has had, being that it wasn't publicly accessible previously. So this is a big one. And this one ties in with some of the improvements that the city is planning for Chase Drive. We also currently operate a farm stand on Saturdays. This is the building down in the left-hand corner. The vision for it is the rendering at the top. Everything that we do here will fit, you know, stylistically with the place. We want it to still feel, you know, like a farm. But we'll have a certified community kitchen in there, so we can do projects and job training with youth, and it'll also serve as our primary farm stand and food access resource.
That would be a remarkable change.
It would, yeah. Went from that to that. We also are working on a partnership with, in particular, Cordova High School, but also talking to American River College in Los Rios about the construction of an animal barn on-site, to work with the FFA program and provide opportunities for job training, opportunities really for youth to, to have their animals on pasture and do much more intensive veterinary-type program work that extends from what they're doing right now at the, at the high school level. So bigger animals, more of them, and getting more real-world experience in managing the health of cows and sheep and pigs, and so on.
That's really timely, because the park district is not letting them keep their animals in the barn, in the schoolhouse barn anymore.
Yeah, the barn is really, the one we're referring to in Hagan Park, is really not suited any longer for the, you know, the well-being of the animals. So this will be a much more modern facility. And if that program, which I think is an amazing program, is gonna really provide the kids with the type of career opportunities, this, this partnership is a no-brainer, in our opinion.
David, they're showing on Thursday, and auction is Sunday morning, if you're interested, at the state fair, or county fair.
And lastly, is a visitor center building. And these are just concepts. So we're simply at the concept stage of some of these buildings. But the purpose of it really is, is a primary visitor center with classrooms, meetings, and office space, but also to interpret the history of the ranch, which is, is very unique, and to tell the story of food and agriculture in our region. So these combination of assets at the site will, what we think will create a world-class center for food, health, and the environment right here in Rancho Cordova. We're gonna be at the table with you guys to create this. We're looking for community input. And we know that we've got an ambitious project ahead of us, but, you know, every indication is so far is that the, the community, not only this community, but the larger community, this is, this is what we need. We call ourselves the farm-to-fort capital of America, and we don't have a, you know, a center like this. So it's time for us to build it. So we have time for Q and A, or we can wrap it up?
I think you have a garden in most of the elementary schools. I know there's one that's still gonna be working on theirs that'll be beginning, that's the River View STEM Academy. They have one that's going to start this summer, and it'll be ready for the kids when they come back. I'm wondering if you have FFA from Cordova High, if you have Future Farmers of America that are coming to the Soilborne to learn there also?
Yes, we're working definitely with Brett at Cordova High School and the Future Farmers of America. We've reached out to various groups. And as far as the school gardens, because we're a small grassroots nonprofit ourselves, but we're very committed to seeing a garden in every school. So besides really directly working with schools in the area, all levels, elementary, junior high, and high school, we also are committed to providing training. And once a year, we hold a symposium where we bring teachers from lots of schools to share best practices and to support them, so that we can actually get this to happen much faster than if we were just trying to do every single school ourselves.
But Mayor McGarvey, what you'll see in the next several years is the creation of a pathway from elementary to middle to high school that will begin to develop in kind of these career opportunities around food and agriculture. So definitely, we're really well-established in the elementary schools right now, and those programs are really starting to take off. But also, and this may be news to the council, but they're, Cordova High's adding a third position to their ag academy. Part of that position will be placed at Mills Middle School. So now we'll have this full pathway, including after-school and summer job training at the farm. So there is now this continuity that did not exist previously, and it's just gonna get better and better.
I like it, thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for showing us, though. That was great. Okay, our next presentation. I'm gonna ask Maria Alms to come up to the proclamation up here at the podium. I have a little letter for you. Well, we have a proclamation honoring Maria Alms for the occasion of her retirement. This means you're just changing jobs, is what retirement means. Whereas Maria Alms, former chief, volunteers services the VA Northern California Healthcare System, retired from the United States Department of Veteran Affairs, May 3, 2019, after 33 years of service to veterans and their families. Whereas the VA Northern California Healthcare System has maintained successful partnerships with veteran service organizations in the local community. While focused on an enhanced patient-centered approach to care, Maria has the ability to work with the local communities to raise awareness of the needs of the patients and to get their needs met. Whereas Maria has a past recipient of the Distinguished Citizenship Award from the Benevolent and Protective Order of the Elks, local number 2484, in Rancho Cordova for her merurious services and veterans. She played a key role in the annual Memorial Day and Veterans Day events held for the VA Northern California Healthcare Systems. Whereas Maria chaired Vet Stock, an annual fundraising event, working to end homelessness for veterans. The first Vet Stock was held May 29, 2016, in Rancho Cordova, and raised more than $18,000 to directly support the homeless veterans program with the VA Northern California Healthcare System. In the first year, more than 60 veterans received assistance from these proceeds. Assistance include housing, beds, food, clothing, rental deposits, and other household needs. Whereas Maria was also instrumental in bringing a meditation garden to the local VA hospital, and later, the addition of a mosaic rule to the mural to the local Rancho Cordova artist. The mural enhanced the quiet setting of the veterans and their families, giving them a beautiful space to replace and reduce the anxiety oftentimes associated with vet visits and appointments. Maria provided property healthcare and oversight security, final design, site requirements, and approvals. The mural was dedicated in May 28, 2017. Now therefore be it resolved, the city council of the city of Rancho Cordova expresses their congratulations to Maria on her retirement, and for her years of outstanding service and contributions to local veterans and their families. Whencewhereof I set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Rancho Cordova to be affixed this 20th day of May, 2019. Congratulations.
Thank you. Well, I would like to say thank you very much, Mayor McGarvey. And as you all know in your careers, we don't do this alone. The city of Rancho Cordova has been a great partner with the VA. We thank you all very much. From the very beginning, the very first Vet Stock that we had over here with the Elks, the city stood up and sponsored a table, and has been supportive of everything that we have tried to do, in addition to everything you've done for the vets, and all of you for Veterans Village. It's been an honor, and I'm truly humbled, and thank you so much. Thank you. Well, the thing is, Bob, I think you said she's officially retiring on the 23rd, and we already miss her.
Well, like I said, she's, retirement means you're changing jobs. That's all it really means, so. Next presentation will be Vice Mayor David Sander, honoring Carrie Simpson. I think I've heard that name a time or two.
I'm not gonna make it, just so you know.
Oh, I'm not gonna make it.
I'm not gonna make it.
You're gonna try.
I'll forgive you, Mr. Mayor, for this duty at some point in the future, but this is not an easy one. Carrie Simpson, you've been with us since 2006. And because of you, this city is a fundamentally better place, a safer place, a better place, particularly for some of our poorest residents to live in. A safer place by everyone's perception and by all the numbers. You have had a massive impact on the quality of life for the people who live here. And many residents here tonight probably do not know your name, but they owe you an enormous debt of gratitude for the difference you've made in all of our lives. So, okay, I got through that part. I'll get through this part. So this is a proclamation from the city of Rancho Cordova honoring Carrie Simpson, who was hired in 2006 and has served the city of Rancho Cordova as the Neighborhood Services Manager overseeing code enforcement and animal services. She has given more than 30 years throughout her career to public service, and she has been a remarkable asset to the community of Rancho Cordova. Whereas over the years, Carrie has implemented a proactive code enforcement program to improve the quality of life for residents and to enhance the community, which led to the city's award-winning Blightbusters Educational Program. She's also been instrumental in helping to facilitate the demolition of, get this list, the Cordova Inn, the First Value Inn, otherwise known as the No Value Inn, for those of you who know. The Stagger Inn, that was a doozy. The Bradshaw Inn, and not to be undone, the Grandy Apartments, which were not so grand. And numerous other complexes and buildings that were either demolished or significantly improved. In 2007, she implemented a rental housing program that has improved the quality of housing in Rancho Cordova, and was the first in the region, and has influenced the lives of thousands of people. Some of Carrie's accomplishments include implementing a comprehensive animal services program, collaborating with the SBCA and Whisker Warriors to enhance programs, and working alongside the Rancho Cordova Police Department to further improve enforcement programs related to cannabis and other areas that have needed enforcement. Carrie has also played a role in developing a robust homeless outreach team. Whereas Carrie has been a leader in her profession and has sought opportunities to provide education and training within the field of code enforcement, she has also been called to testify as an expert regarding changes to the state health and safety code. Throughout her career, she has held leadership positions within her industry, and in 2018, she was elected as the President of the California Association of Code Enforcement Officers, CASIO. And whereas Carrie has gone above and beyond her city duties to assist residents who have needed help, her commitment to the city of Rancho Cordova is unquestionable, and her dedication to the community is remarkable. Now therefore be it resolved, the city council of the city of Rancho Cordova expresses its sincere appreciation to Carrie Simpson for her service and dedication to the city of Rancho Cordova. In witness thereof, the mayor has set his hand and caused the seal of the city to be affixed. That's for you, Carrie.
I promise, I promise.
I have a few more things.
Oh, okay.
That's from the Whisker Warriors.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tara. So in 2006, Rancho Cordova was a young city, only four years incorporated. We knew we needed code enforcement, because our highest calling as a city is public safety. Nothing is more important to this city government than public safety. And the part that we were missing, the part that we had missed for 40, or 50, or 60 years under county jurisdiction, was code enforcement. No one required properties to be maintained the way they were supposed to under state law and local law. The county just didn't do that. And as a result, Rancho Cordova started out as a very nice, neat, new community, like all nice, neat, new communities do, and over time slid into disrepair and disorder, and things that scare people, and things that influence crime, encourage crime. And we got to be, have a bad reputation. And out of that, Bob McGarvey's effort to incorporate us, along with a lot of others, succeeded in 2002. And by 2006, we knew we had to tackle that toughest nut of code enforcement in our community. And we had tried, through consultants and other means, some other ways of doing it. We'd towed a whole bunch of junk cars, 1,400, as I recall, that the county was towing like four a year. We towed 1,400 in the first couple of years. We towed fourteen hundred in the first couple of years, and we realized there's an awful lot more work like that to do. And we looked around, and Kurt Haven, who was our Director of Neighborhood Services and former CEO of the Chamber of Commerce and city employee number one, and who retired unfortunately a couple of months ago here, Kurt found Carrie and brought us Carrie. Carrie had a distinguished career in several other jurisdictions, and she brought us an amazing wealth of knowledge and energy and care, because code enforcement is not a pleasant task. You do not want to be on the receiving end of someone telling you what to do as a property owner. You do not want the government job of going around telling people, "You can't do that," or "You got to fix that." Both ends are kind of unpleasant, but absolutely necessary. And Carrie had a unique way of dealing with some of our most problematic situations involving, you know, landlords who lived in the Bay Area and hadn't seen their property in forty years, but were sure it was in tip-top condition, while the walls are caving in and there are bugs everywhere and electrical issues galore. Carrie dealt with people who couldn't afford to maintain the property where they were living as a retiree for twenty or thirty years. Carrie has dealt with animal control issues in a way that no one in this county has handled before, with a sense of care about other people, and about the institution, and about the ultimate health of the city. And so Carrie, we owe you a huge debt of gratitude for what you've done for us and what you've set in place. And frankly, the marker you've set, not only here for our residents, of a high bar of property maintenance for public safety, you have also set that bar in the region, because everyone in the region, and really, a lot of cities in the country, look to us as a place that has done it right with regard to code enforcement, and that by and large is thanks to your efforts. So, thank you, Carrie.
Thank you. I've got some brave people standing in the back.
David, if I may... Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Sander. I think everything has been said. I just wanted to add a few words. You know, Carrie has been serving as a key member of the lead city's leadership team, and she has been instrumental in moving some of the major programs and activities that we've had throughout the city. One of the things that I really want to point out about the work that Carrie has done, she has gone way beyond just the code, the term code enforcement. She has brought the element of education, outreach, and a great deal of compassion. So in areas and cases where we had a resident that needed a little hand, a little helping hand, Carrie would spend the time, either on the weekend or at night, willing to help the residents, bring her team in, and we have many members of her, the code enforcement team here in the audience. We also have many members of our leadership team, and that's just a testimony to the wonderful work that she's done. And when she told me about a month ago that she and her husband have decided to retire and move on to Texas, it was a mixed feeling, because on one hand, I'm very happy I had the, it's a new chapter they're opening in their lives, but at the same time, it's also sad to see such a key member of our team to be leaving this organization. Carrie, you would be missed. You've done a wonderful job for us, and I thank you, and I think I'm feeling very comfortable on behalf of staff to thank you for all the wonderful work you have done for this community.
Thank you so much. (applause). Like usual, I can't leave not saying anything, and I did the font really big so I didn't have to wear my glasses, and I still can't see it. So I want to thank you for all your kind words. However much I look forward to the new chapter in my life, I will always be grateful for my time in Rancho Cordova, and I know I will have lifelong friends. I joked with my staff earlier today that I was going to come up here and roast some council members, sorry, Garrett, because you can't find me now. But all joking aside, I want to share my deepest appreciation for the trust you placed in me thirteen years ago. David, you were a big part of my hiring. In my over thirty years of public service, I have never seen a city council so committed day and night to the community, and I hope they realize that. I also want to thank my neighborhood services team, a special thanks to Ryan, Jessica, Michael and Junior, who have been with me since the beginning. This will be the last time I get to brag in this forum about the silent community heroes the code enforcement and animal service team are to the residents. Finally, I want to thank my husband Carl, who is actually working for the city of Dallas and not here, and my children, who attended many of the events in Rancho Cordova. In fact, my nineteen-year-old son Devon was six when he played in his first match, mad march, madness for the pal, and my daughter Vienna, who's here, said, "Ooh, we're going to do like a search around City Hall for stuff," because she's been in here many times when she was a child. To the entire city staff, including my buddies in RCPD, I will miss you all. Take care and bless you all for the wonderful things that the future holds for this great city. Thank you. (applause).
We're still not sure this is legal. We thought you had locked in a contract.
Can we get in the photo?
It's still early. Who's there? Don't worry.
These are my, these are my family, my real family and my real family.
It's still early. Who's there? Who's there? Don't worry.
Come on, guys. Come on, come on, come on, come on. These are my, these are my family, my real family and my real family.
Two rows, two rows. Shorts and tall, so you don't be long. It's good in? It's all right.
I've got another week and a half to give you a hard time.
I want to thank Maria for everything that she's done, Carrie for everything that she's done. Enjoy your retirements, and all the work you're going to be doing.
There is a reception. Is it next, next week there's a reception, or is it this, this week?
I think it's this week, yeah.
Is it this week there's a retirement reception for Carrie?
Yes, and I'll get the time on my, on my...
Cyrus, I was just thinking about where we've gone in terms of crime statistics and perception between 2006 and now, and the absolutely critical importance of code enforcement in that change. We've gone from not the best community in the county to arguably one of the safest communities in the county.
Four hundred cars.
Yeah.
Absolutely. All right. Thank you all. Now, on with public comments. Citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk. Items on the agenda: Speakers will be called to the podium by the mayor at the point on the agenda when the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep comments to three minutes or less and to state name and the community of residence. Under the provisions of the California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on, excuse me, on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. Do we have any cards?
We do. The first speaker is Carol Limbaga. Following Carol will be Mary Nessel.
My name is Carol Limbaga, Rancho Cordova resident. We attended the fourth Cordova Creek to Trail feasibility study meeting this last Thursday, May sixteenth, at Mills Middle School. Police officers in this room, please listen, I'm going to talk about you too. Four points. Number one, I know it kills you not to use this bond because it's free money, but adding a twelve-foot bike trail behind residents' yards into an old neighborhood is never a good idea. It's an afterthought, like buying a one-bedroom home with a postage-sized backyard and then having four kids. Number two, do I want my kid walking or biking into needles, garbage, and homeless folks? Stalkers? How often will this be cleaned and by whom? Will bad folks check out the backyards and come back later to steal stuff? If residents report activities behind their homes with no space for police to drive their cars into, will they walk, go on bikes, use helicopters? Number three, a special stop for cars at the Chardonnay Creek Crossing, combined with another stop a few hundred feet at Coloma, will soon become an irritant. Number four, Chase and Coloma is already a bottleneck with folks dropping off their kids to school and back again hurrying to work. An additional stop at Coloma, just a few hundred feet from Chase, will cause cars to severely back up in front of, in back of, and in between both lights, causing road rage. So you better have police cars out there on both sides, because you're going to see body parts flying. Would you want your kids there with everyone angrily staring at them to hurry up? Again, adding a bike trail into an old neighborhood is never a good idea. Our pop officers readily admit that trespassers and theft are low priority. Do you remember why these accesses were originally bolted? Now there will be twenty-four-hour access, no homeless, druggies, and stalkers will have found new places. Will you use eminent domain to add the needed footage, we've been told is short in some places? Finally, understand that Thursday's meeting was the fourth and last neighborhood meeting. We were told the next step will be an environmental impact study. If you allow this study, we know there is no respect. Over a hundred people living at the creek are afraid that you five will subject them to danger.
Your time is up. Please wrap up your comments.
This is a safety issue. You should not be caring about those bikers just passing through. Local residents know the danger and will not use this path. The residents at those meetings gave you a loud no. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Mary Nessel. Following Mary will be Tracy Toodle.
My name is Mary Nessel, and I live in the Cordova Meadows neighborhood in Rancho Cordova, and I'm speaking, coincidentally, on the same topic that Carol just finished with. When I moved to this area about fifteen years ago, I specifically searched for a home backing to the American River Parkway, because I wanted to live near a bike path. So I never thought I would be speaking up against a bicycle path, and yet I attended the meeting at the community, the community meeting the other night about this particular bicycle path, and the room was packed, and I'd have to say about ninety-eight percent of the people were quite adamantly against this proposed bicycle path. Those homeowners bought their homes years ago, many of them, decades ago, some of them, backing up to what was known as Clifton's Drain, an area that I believe was governed by the federal government and designed to be nothing more than the neighborhood drainage and a service area for that drainage, never designed to be a public thoroughfare. So for the city now to spend money on converting it to a bicycle path, which can be done, but I think it'll be a very unwise use of money, I think is a bad idea. I looked at some of the renderings at the meeting, and they actually have places where the path is so narrow, they say that they will cantilever the path over the creek. So water or no water in that drainage ditch, that screams liability at me, and I don't think we should be going down that path. And if they decided not to do the cantilevering, then I fear that they would take places, use eminent domain, and we've tried that once before, and I hope you folks never use eminent domain again on any projects in this city. I think the money for this project, no matter, regardless of where the money's coming from, if it's coming from a grant or it's coming from our taxes, I think it should be better used somewhere where the project is more worthwhile. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Hold this a moment. Our city manager liked to have a clarification on it, so you can be next, but let him have his clarification first. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a clarification for the members of the public. This is not an active project. This is, I think the name says it, it was a feasibility analysis or feasibility study, and the public forum was scheduled or planned to gather the same exact kind of input that we are receiving. So there's a combination of technical feasibility, community support, environmental feasibility. So a lot goes into it before this turns into a project. I just want to make clarification that this, there's no funding for this project, there's no, nothing has been, this project does not have active status. This was just a concept and idea that was being explored, and the purpose of the public meeting is to receive that feedback. So my only thought is that if that feedback has been already provided, we can provide this information or present the information to the council, but just, just a thought that I had, I wanted to share with the, with the community and also with the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you. I don't know if that changes what I'm going to say, but thank you for listening to me. My name is Tracy Toodle. I am, I live in Cordova Vineyards. I represent the Toodle family, which is three, almost four adults now, and I have to start out to say that I'm an avid cyclist. I partook of the city's free classes last summer on bicycle maintenance and was so thankful, and I thought that was great. We have, I've used the American River Trail for decades. I am a native Sacramento, Sacramento, and we, but, but, I bought my house in 2003 when the city incorporated, because I saw that it was a diamond in the rough in Rancho Cordova. I love Rancho Cordova. I work at Walmart, I know a lot of the community here. My house backs up to the proposed drainage. It's approximately halfway between, into a half-mile section. My concerns are my privacy. I have a four-foot fence back there, which is the lowest part of my property, so you can easily see in to my house. I'm concerned for my safety. My daughter, who was a Cordova student, when she found out this was happening, she said, "Oh, you know, Mom, they have one of those on the backside of Cordova High School, and they call it Rape Alley." So I wouldn't use it as a cyclist. I wouldn't send my children down there. So I just needed to be up here for selfish reasons. I don't sure where the, just to have it be heard, that this is one household that is opposed to, also, I'm about to sink thousands into a new roof. I'm concerned about my property value. So thank you for listening.
Thank you. Go ahead.
The next speaker is Ann Richardson. Following Ann will be Andrew Cowfell.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council, for this opportunity to speak to you. I too am also speaking about the Cordova Creek Trail and the current feasibility study. My name is Ann Richardson. I've been a resident of Rancho Cordova for sixty years. I've been a property owner in Rancho Cordova for the last fifteen. My property currently backs to the canal that is in question here, the section which runs between Dawes to Coloma Road. I am adamantly opposed to the installation of this trail. I was opposed to the installation of the trail when it was proposed in 2004. I was opposed to it when I spoke to this council last year at the initiation of this feasibility study, and I'm again opposed to it, and it's been said that no monies have been spent, this is not a project, but there are monies that are being spent because... been spent, this is not a project, but there are monies that are being spent because you're doing a feasibility study. I'm a retired state worker for 40 years. I am very, very familiar with feasibility studies, and it does cost money. I spoke to you, and again, I'm speaking to you today. Regardless of how you dress it up, the installation of this trail is a bad idea. It is a threat to the security and privacy of the homeowners along the canal and to every child or adult who may use this trail. Several neighbors have fallen, I should say, those who live on the canal should have a greater vote as to this matter because we are the ones that are most directly impacted on the outcome. Several neighbors have fallen victim to folks who use this canal today. Yes, it has gotten better with the security gates, but now you're considering opening those, this canal back up to the public. This canal is used as an escape route to run after folks have destroyed property, stolen property, broken into homes. They have used this canal as an entry point to gain access into our backyards, again, breaking and entering and stealing property. We are subjected to noise on the canal at all hours of the day and night, especially when the kids leave school, skip school, or are released from school. We are subjected to the mess that is left behind while folks hang out, smoke pot, transients camp there, defecate there, leave their trash behind, set fires to keep themselves warm. On several occasions, I have personally been subjected to individuals on the canal climbing my fence, hanging over my fence into my yards, and taunting my dogs. Where I and my neighbors on both sides of me, this is a perfect place to hide out. We are at the bend of the canal. You cannot see this location from either end.
Your time is up, please wrap up your comments.
Installing the Cordova Creek Trail will only create more opportunity to do the same. The construction on the trail could impact the structure, the pipes, and damage pools of the homeowners on the trail. As many of us know, we have a homeless problem in Rancho Cordova, and it still plagues us. As much as RCPD is doing, and we're doing, and our communities is doing, it's still a problem. We are hindered by the laws of getting rid of the homeless, of addressing the problem. You are now considering an opportunity to open up a new venue for the homeless to camp out there. I ask you to stop this feasibility study now. You are spending money even though you'd like to say you're not. Thank you.
My name is Angie, Andrew Cowell. I live at 10332 Newton Way, Rancho Cordova. This is a letter to, dear Mr. Mayor, who was Ken Cooley at the time, and council members, Bob McGarvey, Linda Budge, and David Sander. This was written in 2005. I attended the meeting on Tuesday, the 29th of March, where the proposed bike trails were shown on a map. Councilmember Budge pointed out a proposed trail in the drainage canal behind my house. I voiced my opposition to the trail being built there. I have talked with a few neighbors, and they also expressed their opposition to the canal being turned into a bike trail. The Sacramento Bee had an article in the paper Sunday, April 3rd, about vandalism in the district parks. The article goes on to say that Park District is trying to, some new ideas to help curb vandalism. First, architects are designing new parks so they face the front of homes rather than backyard fences where vandals can more easily hide on, hide from onlookers. The backyard issue is precisely the issue I have against the bike proposal, bike trail proposal. I would urge you to stop this proposal in the beginning stages before any city money is spent on it. That was sent to the council, 2005. This is a letter that I had typed up, and I sent it to all my neighbors, and I told them to get in touch with you. It's essentially the same thing. The city of Rancho Cordova has had a proposal before them to convert the drainage canal behind your home into a bike trail. The existing drainage will be placed underground and covered. Last year, a notice was mailed out to the residents along the canal about the channel repair project. The county is expecting to complete the project later this year in July after an environmental study is completed. They did repair that portion of the canal behind my home between Coloma and Dawes. If the bike trail proposal is approved by the city and the canal, if the bike trail proposal is approved by the city, the canal might not be repaired for a couple more years. Well, it was repaired. The canal is out of the sight of the public in general. This lack of visibility in the canal gives a potential for mischief such as graffiti, home break-ins, and other criminal activities. Quite a few of the homes have dogs which provide an alert when the people are in the canal. With a bike trail behind the homes, neighbors will not necessarily keep an eye for their neighbors when they hear dogs barking. While this is just in the proposal stage, if you do not want a bike trail in the back of your home, please contact the Rancho Cordova City Council, let them know. That was addressed to Mayor Cooley, Bob McGarvey, Linda Budge, Dave Sander, and Dan Schockland, who's no longer here. This is a letter that I wrote 12 May 2018 to the city. The city council is proposing to study once again the use, the existing drainage canal behind my home between Dulcetto and Newton Way and back of Los Palos Way, Chassela Way, Chardonnay Drive, and Beckland Drive to make a new bike trail for the public. While this sounds like a good idea at first, it's a terrible idea when you consider the possibility for criminals to use this at night to surveil homes along the canal. The East Area Rapist is thought to have stalked individuals and target homes by using Sacramento area canals and ditches along, as noted in the book by Michelle McNamara, "I'll Be Gone in the Dark."
Your time is up, please wrap up your comments.
That was just for Donald Terry and Gaywood, yeah. You haven't heard it before. Thank you.
Angel Ball, if you can come forward. Following Angel will be Bill Rominelli. Following Bill will be Greg Ball.
Good evening, Mayor McGarvey, Vice Mayor Sanders, City Council, city staff, and guests. My name is Angel Ball, and I live in the city of Rancho Cordova in the Cordova Vineyards. My home backs up to the ditch. I went ahead and got a copy of the application that was submitted by our Public Works Director for the grant money from Caltrans to start this project. In this application, I read 19 times that I live in a disadvantaged community. On one page alone, the words disadvantaged community was mentioned eight times. I do not believe I live in a disadvantaged community. The other thing that I found was concerning to me, and I want to mention, is there were six letters written by different people in the community. The letter is pretty much the same letter, just with a different title and a different signature on the bottom. One is the Bicycle Advocates for Rancho Cordova. One is Mills Junior High Principal, Cordova Community Council, the Rancho Cordova Chamber of Commerce, the Highway 50 Corridor Transportation Management Association, Cordova High School Principal, and the Sacramento Area Bicycle Advocates. What bothered me about that is I have been in the Cordova Vineyards most of my life, and I am a leader in that community, and I have several neighbors that are also leaders in that community, and they have spoken to you before. I would have liked a moment, whether you agree or disagree with my position to submit my letter during the application process to Caltrans. Monday night, May 13th, I went to, where did I go that night? Cordova High, 4 o'clock. It was a safe routes to school, walking and biking meeting. I could be wrong, but I think that there were seven residents there. What that tells me is, we must be doing pretty well if seven people showed up. I did submit my comments, however, I want you to hear this one. Going into a school or any school and not considering the residents that live on the same street or nearby streets is not fair. You need to ask us our opinion, you need to take the same amount of time and effort to knock on our door and give us a survey. Apparently Alta went into each school and did headcounts and asked the kids how they got to school and did all kinds of survey information.
Your time is up, please wrap up your comments.
So I would have liked to have said where I wanted crosswalks and lights and et cetera. And I will end my comments at this time with simply saying that I am not interested in having any additional people in the ditch behind my home, and I will be back to hear the presentation whenever that is. Thank you for your time.
Just a comment, Cyrus, about disadvantaged communities. You know, as the current Chair of Secog, I can tell you, that's a recent change in state law. There are certain designated areas, those designated areas are evaluated based on infrastructure, jobs, average income. A map is drawn by the state. Areas that can claim that they are a disadvantaged community get enhanced access to all sorts of state funding. So it is not a adjective that the city would choose to use. It is, however, a term that state law now requires when we're advocating for a grant almost of any kind from the state. So if we're to go after state money, that is an approach that we will have to continually use. But it's not, should not be considered a pejorative comment by the city upon our population.
Well, good evening, council members. My name is Bill Rominelli. I'm a Folsom resident, although I did spend some of my formative years in high school in Rancho Cordova. I grew up on Pitt River Court here in Rancho Cordova. I'm not here to talk about the trail tonight, but in the spirit of public safety being a paramount objective of local government, I am reaching out on behalf of the Keep California Safe Coalition. In full transparency, I am a paid consultant to that coalition. I'm here to ask for your consideration at a future meeting to issue a resolution or proclamation in support of the Reducing Crime and Keeping California Safe Act of 2020. This initiative, which is already supported by dozens of cities, counties, law enforcement agencies, and victims' rights groups, would help improve public safety in several ways. First, it would reclassify crimes that are currently listed as nonviolent, including rape of an unconscious person, sex trafficking of a child, and 14 other serious crimes as violent to help prevent the early release of inmates convicted of these crimes. It would reform the parole system to stop the early release of violent felons, expand parolee oversight, and strengthen penalties for parole violators. It would reform theft laws to restore accountability for serial thieves and organized theft gangs. As you may know, the law was changed that any property theft under the amount of $950 is considered a misdemeanor. Even if a person is caught and arrested for that crime, on subsequent days, there's no limit to the amount of times they can be arrested for that. This initiative would relower that threshold down, back down to $250 where it was before. And then finally, it would expand DNA collection and restore DNA collection to include those convicted of drug, theft, domestic violence, and other serious crimes to help solve rape, murder, and other violent crimes, and to exonerate those who have been wrongly accused. I do have sample resolution text I can provide, and I have a list of current coalition members and other information. Copies for each of you, as well as the city clerk and the city manager. With your permission, I'll give those to the city clerk, and if this is something that the council members, the city manager, the city clerk, or your chief of police would like to talk to me about more at a different time, I'm more than happy to be as helpful as I can. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. So is this, are you, is this part of the bill that Jim Cooper is sponsoring?
That's correct, yes.
Great, thank you.
Next speaker is Greg Ball. Following Greg will be Thomas Marino.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor McGarvey, council. Just to pick this up, I'm talking about the trail that's proposed. I think the other night at the meeting, Thursday night, there was about 130, 140 people there, although only about 109 signed in. And just incidentally, there were two people that were for it. Didn't, obviously with those kind of numbers, they didn't explain why they were, whatever, but there were a couple people that were for it. And for more than an hour, I want you to know that the citizens voiced their reasons for opposing this particular path. And most of the concerns, incidentally, are not about bicyclists who might use the path, it's about safety. Public safety is the primary concern of the city. But instead, the people that were there had very valid concerns about making this storm drain open to the public and the very real unsolvable problems that come with that. You know, there's a minimum of 250 single-family homes abutting this storm ditch. And should you make this open to the public, you will expose the backyards and therefore the entire neighborhood to the transients and the associated problems that transients bring, trespassing, theft, resting, camping, littering, defecation, urination, drugs, hypodermic needles, et cetera. I want to share a couple of statistics, some things that I picked up on, I think that are, I hope they're noteworthy. Since the beginning of this year, beginning of 2019, park rangers have arrested an average of 68 people per month on the American River Parkway. 30 were arrested just last Wednesday. And on this proposed two-and-a-half-mile stretch of those homes that abut it, and within three blocks of that stretch, on the Megan's Law website, there are 16 registered sex offenders, eight of which actually residents have abut this ditch. And the Sacramento Bee, coincidentally, the other day, I want to quote them, "The inhabitants at the American River Parkway have seen a rapid climb since September when a federal appeals court ruled that cities cannot punish people for resting..."
Your time is up, please.
"...or camping in public."
Please wrap up your comments.
I sure will. So today, the citizens of Rancho Cordova have certain lawful protections to keep people from resting or camping, i.e. living in our backyards. So for the security and the safety of our families and neighbors, this ditch cannot become open to the public. It cannot become open to the public. We call on each one of you, our city council, for your leadership in keeping us safe. We call on you to protect our neighborhoods and not to erode our security. The safety and security of your citizenry must be your priority, and when this matter does come before you, we ask you to vote "no" on this trail. Thank you. And I would say, I'm gonna say it publicly, I also believe that if you would be so kind as to give some, give us up here a 30-second notification or a one-minute, however you choose to, it's your meeting, I guess it's our meeting, but saying it all of a sudden to tell somebody they're out of time, there's no way you can finish or be done, and I noticed that it does get us a little bit off track, so a little notice would be nice. Thank you for your time.
I'm confused. Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Can the public see the timer that I see right there? Can you see that from the die?
They cannot see that, but there is a timer that is sitting there. Thomas, can you confirm that?
Yes, yes, it is.
Do you see the time?
Yes, I do.
I just want to make sure, I haven't stood over there to do that.
Well, good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Thomas Marino. I live in Rancho Cordova. I do live next to the water canal. I just, you know, you've heard all the issues. I'm a little disappointed going to the last feasibility study because your consultants within the first three minutes of their presentation nailed all the issues from the previous feasibility study. So I'm very disappointed the project is even still under feasibility. The main thing is, to basically inform all of you, is that because I live next to it, and I believe the problems are unsolvable, my wife... and I believe the problems are unsolvable, my wife and I have made the decision, if you build this thing, we are leaving Rancho Cordova. We will sell our house. We will move pretty much once it's authorized. I will not live with people behind my home. It's just, it's unacceptable. It's not the way I think you folks would want to live. I do believe you care about the community, but I just came to inform you, you build it, I'm leaving. Thank you.
Next speaker is Paul. Paul, you may have to help me with your last name, Gurke. Okay. Following Paul will be Larry Ladd, and that will be the last of my speaker cards.
Mayor, Council, my name is Paul Gurke. I am probably the oldest continuously living in Cordova Gardens resident in Rancho Cordova. When I moved in, the ditch, as we call it, was actually a seasonal creek. Now, I have some questions here that need to be answered. When we moved in, we were told that there was an easement on our property. It was told, we were told that it was a power and sewer and water easement and not a thoroughfare. Okay, so that's one thing that needs to be addressed and looked at. When the county storm people repaired the ditch between Coloma and Dawes, they wiped out a population of amphibians. They disrupted migratory waterfowl habitat, and no environmental study was done. We need a really good environmental study. Now, prior to the time that they closed off the ends of the ditch, we had a lot of problems. We had fencing, being graffitied, we had a rape back there, we had people camping back there, and this was back before the homeless problem was quite so severe. We've also had kids kick in our back fence because they didn't want to walk all the way down to Dawes, kick in our back fence, go through our yard, and out our gate, and let our dogs out just because they were too lazy. So I'm just, just saying, you know, you're going to have to put up cinder block fences or something if you do this. Now, my, my other concern is there are two real blind spots between Coloma and Dawes and between Dawes and down around Moraine Court area. There's, there's blind spots on both places where you cannot see from the street what's going on. And these are just going to be ideal places for all kinds of bad things to happen. I just urge you guys to please, don't even consider this. It's just a really bad idea. I've walked the whole thing many times as a child and as, as an adult, and there are spots there. It is not wide enough to put a, a trail. One of the proposals they had was to put boards around a 90-degree bend and out over the ditch. I could just see a bicyclist coming down there, and we know bicycles, if you've ever been on the bike trail, which I have, some of those guys just zoomed. I could just see somebody come trying to make that hairpin bend and hitting a fence and going over into the ditch and breaking his neck or tearing him under. The city liability would be horrid on that. So in, in closing, everybody I've talked to that, that lives on that...
Your time is up. Please wrap up your comments.
...is against it. So please, please, don't consider it. Table it. Thank you.
I introduce myself.
Yes.
Hi, guys. As you well know, I am Larry Leroy Ladd, one of the founding fathers of the city of Rancho Cordova. And as part of that effort, I put water, semi-treated air, groundwater into the Cordova Canal, so that's my fault. And it's also my fault that poor Angel Ball had to do jury duty. I'm sorry, Angel. Anyway, that was on the personal injury litigation on what was in the water. I'm here to talk to you guys about happenings in Washington that may be relevant to the groundwater remediation system. There are two things that are happening. Number one, the U.S. EPA is supposed to issue their own number for a safe level of perchlorate at the end of this month. Personally, I don't think it's going to happen. Maybe Linda knows better because she has a friend at the Department of Agriculture, but I'm assuming that's not going to happen. The other thing is the Supreme Court in June is deadlocked about how to define the nondelegation doctrine, which many people want to use to dismantle the kind of regulation that created our remediation system. So I wanted to get some facts on file, on record here. Number one, the limit is four parts per gallon for perchlorate, and that is based on maximum unsecure, uncertainty about what caused aplastic anemia in people who are taking large medicinal doses of perchlorate. I got a pretty good idea what caused that. Number one, they were taking large amounts of perchlorate. Number two, they were exposed to radioiodide from fresh nuclear tests. And number three, they fell ill when the B-19 parvovirus, which attacks the bone marrow cyclus through every four or five years. And I've seen that pattern elsewhere. So because there are no more surface nuclear tests, because you can vaccinate for B-19 parvovirus perhaps soon, that would raise the tolerable level of perchlorate to try and establish the reality, the current reality. There is a young man who has been struggling with aplastic anemia in Bridgewater, Maine. His name is Colby Scott. He lives next to a large organic farm operation, which uses lots of Chilean nitrate fertilizer, and it's granitic rock, so it could have a fair amount of radioactive radon. And if I can eventually find out what that was in that kid's water, if, if it ever comes, instead of litigation in New York deciding what kind of perchlorate is in our water, if it ends up through the nondelegation doctrine, that there's litigation here over, a judge decides. I will do my best to find out what that kid was drinking before that court case ever comes up. Thank you.
That is all the speaker cards I have for public comment.
Okay, before we go on to the next item on the agenda, thank you all for coming and letting us know how you feel about, oh, a few things, but the canal for one. And if there's anyone else who hasn't spoken yet that would like to say something, and we bring a card, it would be helpful. I don't see anyone else. Okay. Thank you all. On to our council reports. Donald Terry.
I'll start off by thanking staff and the Travel and Tourism Board. Mark, I don't know if he's in the room. The Amgen start here was phenomenal. My kids had a great time. It was nice that my son was off track, so he could attend as my oldest. It was a great event. The, the one thing that I just want to point out from that event is not once on the news did I hear the, the word Sacramento. I heard Rancho Cordova every single time. So it was starting in Rancho Cordova, it's being hosted by Rancho Cordova, we're in Rancho Cordova Live. So everything I heard on the media, not once did it say, it's here in Sacramento. The only time I heard anyone do that was Mike Testa from the Sacramento Convention Visitors Bureau. So when he got interviewed on NPR locally, he kept saying, coming to the Sacramento region, things like that. But none of the reporters referred to Sacramento ever. It was only Rancho Cordova, so.
That is a great success. I'm so glad you mentioned that.
So if we can get this back again, we should do it. If we can get time trials or, or even, you know, maybe this time we can try to get the, the end to be here. I don't know. But it was a fantastic event. Kudos to everyone that came out in their blue and gold and their noise makers, and there were a bunch of kids that were missing school, it looked like, that we bussed in or something. So fantastic, fantastic job, everybody. Besides that, I haven't been able to attend a lot of city functions, but I did get to go to CAP to CAP again this year and had the honor to lead again the Community Resources, which is the Homeless and Affordable Housing Committee. Because of the, the lack of an economic development committee this year, our team grew from the average of about 15 to 18 people to about 30. We had two new elected officials attend for the first time since I've been going. Garrett over here attended, along with a city council member from Davis. We met with HUD. We met with Senate Banking and Housing, Senate Appropriations, Maxine Waters's staff on the House side to talk about the fact that the Congresswoman's number one priority this year is to get additional funding for homeless services, and it looks like that might be to the tune of about a billion. And then our Senator Feinstein is also carrying a bill that would add another $750 million of emergency funding for homelessness. So some very exciting things. It was a very exhausting few days in DC, but very, very productive. And I also want to thank not only our staff here, but also Silvana Caldera and Simon and Company, who made sure that we had a very robust couple of days and also made sure that nobody got lost in DC and everybody made it to our meetings. So, thank you.
Linda, thank you, Donald.
So this actually has been a very busy time because it's, we're closing in on the end of, of local school, and so there's an awful lot of wind-up things that are happening. I was pleased to join Bob at the Arbor Day celebration at, at his own personal private elementary school in, in the Anatolias and helped plant a tree with him, with Bob and his family. Went to Cordova High School to present, to present a scholarship and was absolutely amazed at all of the kids who are, who are, who have accomplished so much and are getting all these scholarships over there from, from all sorts of organizations. It's very inspiring. Went to the FFA Awards because I have two grandkids who are participating, which is why I know exactly, I know exactly what they're doing with Salisbury and all of the other projects over there. And yes, they are showing at the county fair this week. The B Street Theater wrapped up its work teaching our kids in the elementary schools to write plays, and they always wrap it up with a Saturday morning presentation called Fantasy Festival, where the, they select half a dozen plays, and the, the company of only four people are so incredibly creative between their costumes, their, their sets that are really just boards that they move around. They put on these four plays, and they are generally extremely funny. But we had a really good turnout. This is a project that Rotary supports, and kudos to Rotary, kudos to the B Street Theater. The International Festival that night was once again extremely well-intended, attended, and brought together a full complement of entertainment from around the world. The, at Community Council, we, we don't normally, we have not ever before that I can remember heard the county assessors come and speak. And the county assessor came and spoke, and she was really quite fascinating, believe it or not. And I'm not a numbers person, but she was extremely interesting. The Symphony had their last free concert of the year this past weekend. Garrett and I attended the Habitat Conservation Plan Meeting this morning, along with our staff. And so the things that are on our agenda tonight are items that we have discussed this morning at the monthly meeting. And then finally, of course, Amgen. And to Donald's wonderful comments, I would add the fact that I'm probably not alone in picking up all sorts of comments as I go, just go around town here or in other places, even at a memorial service yesterday. Some people had, had been to the Amgen and were extremely complimentary of everything that our staff and the chamber and Community Council and Travel and Tourism were able to put together, and we owe them all a huge thank you for, for the fact that NBC TV says, here we are in Rancho Cordova. That was cool. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. You're it.
All right. So I'll start with the Amgen race. That was amazing, an amazing event to see in our city. So I have a lot of family overseas, and a good chunk of them is in Gabon, France. And they called me and they were like, it's amazing, we're watching the race. You must be really happy living on riverfront property i- in that tree village that you're in. And I was like, no, that's, they're like, no, that's how Rancho is. That's all we see right now is pictures of Rancho and bikers on the river or on that bike plant. So now, in at least 60 to 100 different countries, they think Rancho Cordova is this perfect riverfront property, so.
We are.
That's, doesn't matter. That's what they saw. That's all they saw. And so that's what I got. And so I agreed with them. I was like, yep, that's it. That's Rancho. So yeah, so that was amazing, three different countries. And for the premier singer was related to someone up here who happened to also be featured in 30 different countries is Mrs. Budge's granddaughter was now in multiple countries. I was like, oh, look at that. Famous. I went to the Cable Commission. I am now an executive, I'm board member on that one, so I'll be voting member, and it's a very interesting group where we're trying to get money back from Comcast Cable and trying to find ways that we can work better together. Then I went to...
Are you going to share?
Huh?
If you get any money, are you going to share?
No, it's going back to Rancho only. It's 400,000. That's Rancho's money.
I'm sorry, I pay a lot of money to Comcast. I think we all do.
It's so good. American River Bank Celebration, proud of them. They're doing business, one of our only local banks that's based in Rancho Cordova, and they've loaned out about $12 million to our local businesses. So great job, guys. IFES International Festival, which was fun, nice job, of course, by Shelley and her group. It's always amazing to see Cordova Community Council put on an event that's just so well-attended, and then there's always cool food, and then you can always lose your kids, because they were doing a rap battle, and it was Mulan song to Kung Fu. And then I lost my kids because they wanted to go up there and hang out and jump kick. So the Ranch Go to Awesome Job Chamber Commerce, we had a breakfast, and we have a bunch of new businesses that popped their head out of Rancho. SDA Governing Board, we're actually up in revenues, so they're looking at newer projects that they can basically fund. So I'm hoping that Rancho Cordova could come away with maybe 10 or 20 million dollars this year from that group. CAP to CAP. So I had my eyes open because I wanted to see CAP to CAP done by our council member, Donald Terry, who actually has amazing ability to use staff and his skill set to get us in front of everyone, from Kamala Harris to every senator. And the biggest thing is that we need housing. And it's, it's now starting to affect business owners because the big pitch was always, always housing for homelessness, and people are like, well, they're NIMBY, which means not my backyard thing. But now it's gotten to the point where people that are fully employed, both people can't find housing in the community, which means minimum wage and above jobs are now, people are trying to go farther and farther away with the community, which means they'll just won't be in your community when you need them. And Rancho is the top private sector job creator and holder of jobs. And so it's critical that we have housing for this group of individuals because that's how our city runs. It runs in a large group of minimum to a little bit higher wage jobs. And without places for them to live, then it makes it harder and it affects our, our whole economy. So Donald was, we were in there arguing, I think, every, even, everyone from McClintock down, eventually all sought our way, and, and they're looking at ways to fund and put that operation back in. They want to build housing that everyone can afford. That way the community stays big. But they say a lot of it is, what's happened is, which is interesting, if you think about it, is when we lost Paradise, which happened to be one of the most affordable communities in the area, and we lost Napa's area in Sonoma, all those people basically flooded as like a migrant population and went into our cities. We happen to be one of the most affordable places in the, in the region, and all our housing is basically getting bought up. The same with Chico. So college students now no longer have a place to live. We are starting to lose our housing, and so it pushes out the, the citizens themselves and has this, this horrible inflation problem that we're having. So it's an interesting problem. So Donald and I were trying to tackle it. I'm pretty sure we solved it, so we can call it good to go. Feel good about that.
I, I would just point out one thing, just to, to clarify what you're talking about. There had been a lot of talk about an infrastructure package that's coming out of the federal government, how they're going to pay for it. They have no idea. But one of the, the suggestions we were given by the Republican staff of the Senate Appropriations Committee in convincing their members, because they don't believe that housing really is part of infrastructure, was to talk about it from an economic development standpoint and the fact that without workforce housing, it's going, you're going to have downward pressure on your workforce and economic development if you can't provide adequate housing. And he was basically saying, that seems like a more, that, that was an argument that he believed his boss and their members were more open to than just saying, this is a problem because we just don't have enough housing that's causing homelessness.
Right. And it was interesting because they actually said the problem, like, almost originated because San Francisco itself used to be a spot where, that's, that's an economic hub where everyone wants to live because they want to be near there because there's a lot of jobs. But as... But as they can't afford it and they refuse to build homes, it pushes them farther and farther out and then they go flood into the communities that actually have affordable homes and then you get these super commuters and they're not arking it. So it's just a, it, you can see where the problems are stemming from and what they have to do to basically solve them.
And it exacerbates the traffic problem.
Yes, every time, so.
And all of the infrastructure in between that.
Yeah. So that was eye-opening and a ton of meetings and I hit 10 to 12 in one day. That was amazing. We went to the, we have this amazing group called the Perses Centered Services, they opened and did a grand ribbon cutting. What they do is they help people that are disabled, that's actually based in Rancho Cordova, they help them to stay in their homes longer. And so it's an amazing group, I didn't know what they needed, I found out about them. It's just another star of Rancho Cordova, why we just helping out people. Had a meeting with the Interface Council. They also had a meeting with the Interface Council of Sacramento and they're talking about how they're gonna partner to basically grow the overall things of ways that they can benefit the Rancho community. And I think that's almost it. And that is all we did in the last two weeks. Done.
So what'd you do in your spare time?
I, I ran a company and played some baseball.
Good for you. David?
Well, I'll second my colleague's comments on AmGen, that was an amazing experience. I hope we'll be able to leverage that or use that experience to, to do similar events in the future, you know, of that sort of impact. I think we had a really positive impact on the AmGen folks. All the feedback I got from them was extraordinarily positive, including a lot of comparisons to other venues that they've been at and how we exceeded or surpassed what was available to them there. We've had an RCA meeting in the past week, very productive. That group is as energized as ever and I'm really excited about what those volunteers are accomplishing for U-Sports. I did a trip to the City of Paradise with the League of California Cities. We talked a lot about the impacts they've had on their community with one sort of interesting tidbit that, that came out of that. And that was, we plan a lot for disaster and how to handle disaster and who's in charge during the disaster, who's making decisions, what that chain of command is. And the comment from Paradise was, and it doesn't, doesn't have to be a Paradise-like event for this to be true, but the comment from the Paradise staff was, and as soon as that acute crisis was over, everyone looked to the city to make decisions. So FEMA looked at us, what do you want us to do? The state looked at them, what do you want us to do? Everyone looked to the city and said, now what? And the city government in their case said, our town's never burned down before, we don't exactly know and we haven't, we haven't planned for this contingency. So that was a, kind of an important reminder to everyone who was in attendance that while we're, we're all doing, I, I hope, you know, a reasonable job of emergency planning and disaster planning for each of our individual scenarios, we need to be sure and we know what happens the day after the disaster and actually have a plan that extends beyond into that next step. Because Paradise said they found themselves, as many cities would, in their, any city almost would in their case, really flat-footed on that front and unprepared for that question of now what. So anyway, that was a fascinating trip, I'd be happy to tell you more about that individually. I also testified last week on SB5, that Senator Beal's bill in the legislature, the League of Cities is in support. Senator Beal contacted me, wanted an advocate for commercial corridors in aging suburban communities. So found me, I was able to testify on that at some level of expertise and I have great hopes actually for that legislation. It is not redevelopment, but it is a form of reinvestment that would be funded by state revenues and would certainly have a massive impact on Rancho Cordova were it to, were it to be implemented. That's my report.
Thank you, David. I'm gonna say what everybody else has said about how I wonder if the AmGen ran and we had the, nothing but compliments from everybody and I'm really glad that we were able to have that here. I'm hoping we can have it again next year and the year after that and the year after that. It was really wonderful and the way it was set up by the AmGen people and with the staff here and with the citizens, everyone just enjoyed themselves so much. I know over there on the White Rock Grove, we had 600 kids from Cordova High in the middle school. It was just, it was great to see that kind of a turnout and it was nice, we had the weather to go along with it too, because a couple of times after that, when they were going through some of the hills and further on down, they got pretty wet. Fortunately, as far as I know, no one was hurt on that. My wife and I were able to go on that IFES, that was a wonderful thing, we were able to go to that at the beginning. Before that, we went to the post office here in Rancho Cordova and that one, the letter carriers, every year they have food that is collected. They leave big bags for the homes, for businesses, and they bring it to the post office that day and they have volunteers who are going through those bags and sorting those things out and they take them to the Sacramento Food Bank and then it's distributed out and some of it we got back here in Rancho Cordova. That was a wonderful thing. I didn't know that the letter carriers did that every year, but they do. So that's a wonderful thing. The Mayor's Walks are gonna start again. We were going to have one, but we kind of got rained out, so we're gonna start in August. We're gonna have one in August at AmWynn, in, AMWynn rather, in Lincoln Village. We're gonna have one, that's August 17th, August 31st, Riverview Stem Academy. September 14th, we're going to Cordova Villa. September the 28th, we're going to Rancho Cordova Elementary. And October the 12th, we're going to the Robert J. McGarvey Elementary School. And speaking of that and planting a tree and like that, last year, my wife and I had our granddaughter with us and she helped Cyrus, she went over to him and got a handful of dirt and put it on his shovel and had him. So she was helping at that. And this year she helped with, she's a little bit bigger, she's gonna be four next month, which is hard to believe. But anyway, she was having a good time with doing the tree and all that sort of thing. But it's a nice way to kind of introduce kids to what you can do. And so it's, it's a wonderful thing. So I'm just gonna say that's what I've got for right now and pass it on to our city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And in the interest of time, I would be very brief, since AmGen was mentioned by all council members and I wanted to take the time, an opportunity to thank some staff. I know Ashley Downton with our communications team, with our public works team and police worked really hard to get this event organized. They put many, many hours of work into it. I also want to thank Mark Saposnick with travel and tourism. He was instrumental in working with, very closely with staff, so I just wanted to make sure that they are acknowledged for the good work that they did. The only other item that I wanted to point out, there is an old building that used to be a Taco Bell at some point on our, on the city-owned property next to Folsom Bay College. We had planned for demolition of this building, so just to let the council know that and the community know that the work on demolishing this building is planned to start possibly this week, so, so you're aware of.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. We have a tradition of getting to take sledgehammers to buildings that we're going to knock down. I have pictures of, you know.
So, isn't there some police and fire participation potential?
Yes, I believe there is, so.
And, and it would be my first building.
Have they done it?
So I think, I think the idea was to use this as a training opportunity for, for Sacramento Fire, so that's, is that still the plan? Yes, so.
They can burn it down, but remember the rule is Garrett gets, I get a swing at it.
So we'll find a way, see if we can get the council involved in swinging a hammer. Thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, well, let's see, Stagrin was fun, we had, yes. Okay, onward to the next consent calendar. Consent calendar items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. Are there any items council wishes to pull?
Move the item?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, ask the city clerk for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Mayor McGarvey.
Aye.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, consent public hearing items. Consent public hearing items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. I'm gonna open for public hearing and ask if we have any cards or anyone who wants to speak on that.
No, I do not.
Nothing on those?
Is this for, no, okay.
Then we close the public hearing and are there any items wishes to pull?
Move it.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, ask the city clerk to roll the call. Call the roll, blah, 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 please.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Mayor McGarvey.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Getting right along here, public hearing items and ask our city clerk to announce the subject, please. 11.1.
Creekside Self-Storage Villages of Zinfandel Special Planning Area Amendment and Major Design Permit, project number DD9820, located on North Mather Boulevard, west of Zinfandel Drive.
Okay, thank you, and ask our staff a report, please.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. I'm June Cows with the Planning Department. Tonight, we are reviewing the Creekside Self-Storage Project. Thank you. So the project request is for a special planning area amendment for light industrial zoning interior side and rear setbacks and a major design review for self-storage buildings to include parking, lighting, and landscaping. So the project is located within the Villages of Zinfandel Special Planning Area. Now it's also part of the Creekside Commerce Center Lot 4. The project site is within a light industrial zoning district and to the east and to the west, it's also light zoning. To the north is Business Professional Zoning District and to the south, zoning is open This project site is also within the Mather Airport overfly's safety zone and so the runways are southwest of this project site. So the Creekside Commerce Center has a history for the subdivision map approval and design review, reduction of the parcels and the buildings. And then in April 2017, there was an extension approved. So this is showing the Creekside Commerce Center locations of all the lots and Lot 4 is highlighted. And this slide shows the subdivision map and the building locations. So the proposed special planning area amendments are for light industrial setbacks to include a reduction for the interior side setback from 10 feet to zero feet if adjacent to non-residential areas. And then the second change is for the rear setback for only for Creekside Commerce Center Lots 4, 5, 6, and 7. And that's going from 10 feet to 5 feet. So this shows, this slide shows all the light industrial parcels within the Villages of Zinfandel Special Planning Area that would be impacted by the interior side yard, side interior setback. Under the zoning code for light industrial zone, the setbacks are at zero as well. So for the rear setback, it would only affect the highlighted four lots, that's 4, 5, 6, and 7. Lots 5, 6, and 7 rear property line is along Lot 4 side property and Lot 4 rear property line is adjacent to the open space area. In looking at the open space area, this slide shows the width from the rear property line to the edge of the bike path. So it's wider along the Creekside Self-Storage project site and then it narrows towards the west. So this is one of the reasons why lots 1 through 3 are not included in that reduction of the rear setback. So the open space area is owned by the City of Rancho Cordova and includes a 10-foot-wide bike path that is 10 to 15 feet above the Creekside Self-Storage site. It also includes a slope, as you can see, a dark area within the open space area, and then a flat area between the project site, Lot 4 and Lot 8. The last time we looked at this area, there were concerns with the bike path and views of the light industrial area, so staff decided to look at this entire open space area as discussions with the applicant proceeded about ways of providing adequate buffer if setbacks were reduced. In doing this, city staff utilized the crime prevention through environmental design or SEP10 method. The goals were to provide screening for the potential industrial storage yards, provide a safe environment for the bike path users, and decrease the opportunity for crime in the homeless encampments. By using the SEP10 method, staff proposed the flat area to be planted with natural grass and wildflowers, so that provides an open view for natural surveillance. Plant a line of trees along the slope, provide screening and discourage large areas to hide or camp, and provide vertical vines along the building walls, and that discourages graffiti. Provide lighting and camera along the building wall. So the proposed landscape plan is consistent with the SEP10 method. The applicant has provided a series of renderings for the next few slides, so taking at these locations R1 and R2 on the bike path. So this shows just a view without the trees, looking at the self-storage buildings probably around Lot 1 or 2. This is the same location but with the trees. And this is a different location closer to the self-storage buildings.
Can I ask a quick question, because we've run into this before with industrial? How long is it gonna take for the trees to look like that?
I imagine it's gonna take about 10, 15.
We need to stop giving those renderings that look like this.
Actually, a redwood, if it's properly cared for, will take 10 years to get to 10 feet.
Yeah, we were looking at some drought.
So what is, what is the estimate of these trees? Like, how tall are the, is the three in the middle?
On the slope, I imagine that's probably about 15, 20 feet right there.
Yeah.
You gotta start somewhere.
I, I agree, I agree. It's just, when we look at renderings like this, show me what it's gonna look like when it's done. Like, what, what it's gonna look like a month after they open? Because I, I just feel like I got pulled, somebody pulled a fast one on me with the dismantler that we put out there that's on Sunrise and we saw renderings with 20-year-old trees and then they put in four-foot trees that two years later are four and a half feet. So, again, I'm not saying I'm opposed, I just, the, the process of this, I, I don't like seeing this as an example and go, look, this is how it's gonna look. It's, oh, this is how it's gonna look when my grandkids ride their bike by it, so. And my kids are eight and four at the moment, in case anybody's wondering.
So this, this is a different location closer to Zinfandel Drive and this is the rendering through the, through the trees. And here's an actual picture of the bike path entry on Zinfandel Drive, so you can see there are some existing trees already planted there. And this is a picture of slope, just looking at the slope at the rear corner of Lot 1, looking towards Zinfandel Drive. So the major design review is only for the highlighted area of the self-storage buildings. The building up along North Mather Drive was previously approved. The building in front, as I said, already went through the major design review. The self-storage buildings' walls act as the perimeter walls. There is no outdoor storage with this project. It is all inside storage. The building along the rear property line is proposed for RV and boat storage.
So for, looking at this site plan, where's the office?
The office is gonna be part in the front building.
Oh, I see that.
Yeah.
So no onsite manager?
At this time, the applicant is, can probably answer that question. I do not believe so. But she can answer that when she comes up. I do not believe so, but she can answer that when she comes up. And so, this shows the perimeter exterior building elevations. The third one down is the rear elevation against the bike path. The CMU block incorporates varied colors, a parapet wall varies in height at interest, the buildings are broken up with that open view fence, and vines break up that long wall as well.
You know what, I just realized I might have, I might have a conflict of interest with this item, so I'm going to step out. So, I'm not, I'm not completely sure, but either way, I think, for an abundance of caution, I'm going to walk out.
Should you state the nature of the conflict?
My employer and the property owner may have a relationship that I'm, I didn't do any research on, but I'm just realizing.
So, the project is exempt from CEQA pursuant to Section 15183, consistent with Community Plan, General Plan, and Zoning. And staff recommends the city council find the project in compliance with CEQA Guidelines Section 15183, introduce and waive the first reading of ordinance approving the amendments to the Zinfandel Special Planning Area, and adopt the resolution approving the major design review for Creekside Self-Storage, subject to findings, project plans, and conditions of approval. I do have one correction for condition approval number 28, bullet number 6, and that's to replace the word "east" with "west." If you have any questions, and the applicant is here.
June, is there a sightline from Zinfandel? If you're driving on Zinfandel and you look to your left, can you see this facility from that elevation? Does Zinfandel sort of pulls down?
Sure, if you're coming down off the hill.
Yeah, I'm, I...
But there's, but this, there's, if you look at the parcel map again, or the tentative map, there'll be three buildings in front of it on Zinfandel.
Yeah, I'm thinking at the top of the hill, because I just drove this day and looked there, but the top of the hill and looked left, as I'm looking at this site plan, I may have been misjudging what I was, what I was seeing down to the left, so, I'm just trying to figure out what's the view shed.
Yeah, eventually, yeah, if you can look at the subdivision plan that was approved, there's going to be three buildings along Zinfandel Drive, so when you get on top of the hill where the open space, that's probably where you're going to see the rear elevation.
But, I will say, because of the way the road curves, you're actually...
You're pointed the other way.
Yeah, you're pointed the other way, and then you don't, you don't get down closer to grade level.
It's better than that frame to look over there.
Yeah, until you get down to the intersection.
That's right.
I also just came through there today, but I do that all the time.
Okay, well, thank you for that. I'm going to open this to public hearing and ask our city clerk if there are any speaker cards for this item.
I have one speaker card, Angel Ball.
You're looking for a storage place, right?
Yes. Angel Ball, City of Rancho Cordova, Cordova Vineyards. I wanted to come up at this point to talk about major design reviews, and not so much this particular project I'm neutral on, but I wanted to talk about a major design review that happened in the Zinfandel Vehicle Drive neighborhood that you approved in December of 2015. And I didn't know it to speak on the issue at the time. It was for Sunrise Auto. And Sunrise Auto has not used the property as they said they were going to. And June has been very good at explaining to me planning and property and designs, and I was wondering if, when you do a major design review or any review, if somehow we could tell the property owner, you can't junk up the property before we say it's okay for your design. Does that make sense?
Actually, code enforcement is aware of this one.
Okay.
Because, because personally, I've complained about it, just parking all the stored cars out there.
Right.
That's not appropriate, so.
And I just didn't know if during this design phase, if there was a sentence that said, "You lose your design rights if you junk up the property," and that's, that was all my, my, I mean, I don't know how it works, but that was just my comment is, and so you're familiar with it, and you've seen all the nonsense. So, anyway, that's all I had, thank you.
Very good, I'm glad you're paying attention.
And Angel, we've got a lot of work to do on that site you just mentioned. I think everyone can acknowledge that.
That's for sure.
Thank you, any other cards?
No.
Any other member of the audience who'd like to speak on this?
Does the applicant want to, want to speak?
Hi, Mayor, Councilmembers, I'm Sarah LeBashy with DNS Development, and I just wanted to clarify a couple of points that I heard brought up. We appreciate your consideration on this project, and one question that Linda had regarding onsite quarters, at the time, we didn't show for the onsite manager to have living quarters. There's the opportunity for that, but in talking with different operators, they have stated sometimes there's not a need for it if it's proximity to their other locations or whatnot, there's a trend to not have maybe somebody that lives there, but they have 24/7 surveillance and, and management occurring. And then, I know Councilmember Terry stepped out, but I will take note for my rendering guide to consider how mature the trees are in future renderings. But, of course, we were trying to be sensitive to past concerns from when it was reentitled previously, and in putting self-storage, our thought was, originally, this was proposed for yard space, so visit, open yard space, and by putting enclosed storage, you're having a building site there with, that would be actually, in my opinion, aesthetically pleasing. So, I think what you're going to see is a better product than what was previously approved. So, I don't know if you guys had any other questions specific to that?
Any questions?
So, will there be any stored vehicles at the site? Outdoors?
Outdoors, no, no. There, we have enough turn radius for fire, and then for personal vehicles to park to unload.
We had, you know, a discussion earlier with Carrie here, talking about appearance of the community, and how critical it is that, you know, things look nice, because that's, that's a big part of making them safe, people feel safe. Bad guys, if things don't look nice, know that's neighborhood doesn't care about itself, so that's a place to go do bad stuff. It's just psycho, human psychology, we're, we're built that way. And so, I think you're exactly right, an open yard at this site would be more disorder than a nicely-developed building like this. Now, the flip side, from the city perspective, is this is probably less revenue that we might get from another use. There won't be sales tax here, the kind of minimal employment, right, versus what might be there in a yard. Property tax for, for us is small, you know, in general. So, that's an interesting, but the other side of the trade-off is, this is a necessary thing for our residents, as long as we don't fill up everything here with mini storage.
Yes, and then the existing building that's, or the building that's showing, fronting the street, we're keeping in line with the adjacent industrial buildings. So, from North Mather, it will look like the other industrial buildings, and keep that kind of continuous look and feel.
Okay. That's my only question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, anything else from the public cards or anything?
No.
All right, then I'll close this public hearing, and ask, we have a motion on this.
Okay, so I will move that we find the environmental documentation adequate and appropriate, that we introduce and rave the first reading of this ordinance, approving the amendments to our special planning area, and adopt the resolution for Creekside Self-Storage Major Design Review with the corrections as noted by June.
Great, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, you have the roll call, please.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Mayor McGarvey.
Aye. Thank you very much, and thank you for your information, and we appreciate that. On to 11.2, and ask our city clerk to announce the subject, please.
Bradshaw Village Parcel Subdivision Tentative Subdivision Map Development Agreement and Major Design Review, project number DD 9805, located north of Old Placerville Road, approximately 730 feet east of Bradshaw Road.
Okay, thank you, and staff, you have something to say, I think.
Good evening, Mayor McGarvey, Councilmembers and staff. Nick Sosa, Assistant Planner. The project we have tonight is for the Bradshaw Village subdivision, for a tentative subdivision map development agreement and major design review. The project is located on Old Placerville Road, on a roughly five-acre lot directly behind the Bradshaw Village Shopping Center and near the Windchase Apartments. The applicant is requesting three entitlements from the city, a tentative subdivision map for 57 single-family residential lots, a development agreement for fees, maintenance, annexation requirements, and CCNR enforcement, and major design review for the, for the single-family lots, including elevations, landscaping, and noise mitigation for the property. For these 57 lots, the typical lot size is approximately 45 feet wide by 57 and a half feet deep. They're proposing a loop design with two entrances on Old Placerville Road, along with a six-foot sound wall along Old Placerville Road with a landscape lot to be maintained by an HOA required by the development agreement. The project is proposing rolled curbs on the internal minor streets and a vertical curb along Old Placerville Road. The project includes a 10-foot rear yard setback, a 5-foot side yard setback, a 10-foot front setback to the living space, and a 18-foot setback to the garage. These setbacks are consistent with the, those required within the village center zoning designation by the Rancho Cordova Municipal Code. The project is also include, includes a development agreement between the City of Rancho Cordova and Bradshaw Village Parcel. It's for a 15-year term, includes fees for park development fees, police services fees, and annexation fees, and requirements typical of a new small subdivision. The development developer is required to develop an HOA for maintenance of the landscape lots along Old Placerville Road, and the developer agrees to establish CCNRs, and given the option to have those CCNRs enforced by the HOA or the city's CCNR enforcement program. For the major design review, the, there are three floor plans. All are 1,815 square feet with four elevations, labeled as elevations A, B, C, and D. The modern design includes a flat roof with a parapet to screen roof-mounted HVAC units, a considerable amount of building articulation for visual interest, and color variation to break up the front facade. The three floor plans are a three-bedroom, a three-bedroom with a loft, and a four-bedroom floor plan. These are the four modern elevations. The elevations show lots of building articulation for the, an interesting facade, and color variation, and an accent color on the garage. So, the roof-mounted HVAC units are fully screened from view, and each one, each home will have a two-car garage. This slide is showing palm trees for the renderings, however, they were not included as part of the landscape plan.
We appreciate that.
Linda, you okay? All right.
So, the landscape, so the landscape plans will incorporate a variation of narrow trees, including a red maple, green spire linden, emerald sunshine elm, and a combination of 10 different shrubs and three variations of ground cover.
I should just say, for the record, were I to vote for that, I could not go home tonight. Just, my wife has very strong opinions about palm trees in Rancho Cordova.
Oh, good.
You're not alone.
Good, I'm so glad. So, but can I ask a question? I have to tell you that a couple of our streets in Stone Creek have little leaf linden, and that has turned out to be the most unsatisfactory tree. And if green spire linden has the same bad habits as a little leaf linden, it would be really nice if they chose something else. There's only like one month out of the year that it isn't doing something that has to be picked up, raked up, blown off, disposed of in some manner.
We can definitely work with the applicant on other options for that.
I appreciate it.
But not palm trees, got you.
No, not palm trees.
Okay. So, as part of the project, acoustical study was completed with results exceeding the city's allowed noise ordinance levels. The, some mitigation measures have been added to the project's conditions of approval. The applicant has cooperated with the neighboring shopping center and has developed an agreement to mitigate the noise levels, created from the center's loading docks, which include additional mechanical equipment screening, changed delivery hours, so their deliveries will be restricted to not be allowed between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM, and additional enforcement of truck idling. One thing also that was part of the mitigation measure was a 10-foot wall between the shopping center and the residential homes as a mitigation measure for the noise. So, for environmental, the project is exempt from further CEQA review per exemption 15183, projects consistent with the community plan, general planner zoning. Staff recommends that council find the project exempt by exemption 15183, waive the first reading of the ordinance for the development agreement, and adopt the resolution approving the tentative subdivision map and major design review. Also, the applicant has requested to strike condition number 40, which requires that all the curbs be vertical curbs, as that's inconsistent with what they've submitted for improvement plans. The improvement plans that they've submitted shows rolled curbs for internal minor streets and vertical curbs along Old Placerville Road, so we would like to strike that.
Do we know why Public Works wanted vertical curbs?
It was actually the Police Department that had requested vertical curbs.
Do we know why the Police Department wanted vertical curbs?
I can...
Define vertical curb for everybody.
Square.
Okay, not rolled.
Not, not rolled.
Okay. Just making sure.
I think the, the reasoning for that is that with vertical curbs, it's harder to park on the sidewalk. With rolled curb, it, there is a tendency for most drivers to actually end up parking on the sidewalk.
And, and I agree, you know, I mean, that's absolutely accurate, but, but it's an unusual standard for us, for most people.
Oh, really? It wasn't, I mean, that was one of the big compromises that we made to try to lower the costs in the South Planning Area, was going back to rolled curbs. A ton of it was, was straight curbs, and, I mean, we worked with developers to do it, but I think that the preference would always be to do straight curb, no?
It depends, it depends on what the landscaping is, because if you have a tree lawn, and, and then a sidewalk, and then the front yard, then you have a square curb. But if it's just, if it's just a monolithic curb gutter and sidewalk, then in most subdivisions, it's, it's rolled. You have square curb along, you know, public space, open space, park space, that kind of thing.
Yeah, I'm, that's pretty consistent with what it looks like in Anatolia, but I know that as a compromise at some point to lower costs, we agreed in some, in some cases to, to go to it, but... Is the applicant not wanting to do, I'm confused with the...
The applicant would like to do rolled curbs internally to the subdivision and vertical curb along Old Placerville Road.
And that would be inconsistent with our standard?
That would be...
No, that would be consistent.
Consistent.
So, what's the question?
The question is, why did the Police Department specifically recommend that they use square curbs?
On the intern?
Internally.
And the answer is to prevent the cars from parking on the sidewalk.
Okay, that would be with any subdivision that we have.
On Placerville Road, right.
Our CPD would be happy to address that issue?
Well, wait, so, you're, you're saying, though, that, go ahead, come on, I just want to make sure that we're, we're talking about the same thing. On Old Placerville... On Old Placerville, it's going to be straight curb?
Correct.
On interior to the development, the standard would be rolled curb?
Yes.
Just like everybody else.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Assistant Chief Jeff Sheldon. I concur with the fact that the rolled curbs would probably be more aesthetic in there. The original SEPTEN analysis was that, just like the city manager said, was to prevent cars to park on the side of the road and/or on the sidewalks initially. It's, it depends on how wide the street is, and most occasions in this one, it looks pretty narrow, so that was when the crime analysis did their initial analysis on it, taking into consideration the, the width of the roadway, that the, that curb would be better. I do agree that it would probably be more aesthetic and more consistent with the rest of the city, however, that was just the initial assessment.
So maybe we could agree that we'd be happy to hear more about this just as a separate item, but perhaps not for this, not for this, for this application. Maybe Nick could go back to the site plan?
Would it be better for the, having that on Placerville Road, having the, you know, not having the rolled curves on it?
On, on the Placerville roadside, I would, Old Placerville, I would say squared curb, because then it would keep people from driving up onto the sidewalk. And again, being consistent with open spaces and, and public access spaces, I think that's a standard, I'm, I'm not in planning, but I think throughout the city, that's what we do.
Well, and a great example of where it would be great not to have rolled curb is right out here on White Rock, where you see bus stops and all kinds of other things, and people going mid-50s, you know, three feet from somebody sitting at a, at a bus stop.
Correct.
Our, our current standard for all arteries and thoroughfares are vertical curves.
Right, right.
All righty, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the council?
So, just to, just to confirm with staff, these lots are so small that we have a reduced front setback, and, and there is no room for tree lawn and separated sidewalk.
Yes, that, it's a very short front setback of 10 feet.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna open a public hearing. Ask the city clerk if they have any speaker cards for this item.
I have one speaker card, Tara Colvinbach, if you'll please come forward.
Hi, I'm Tara Colvinbach, and I live in Rancho Cordova in Stone Creek. And I agree with Linda about the little-leaf linden trees. I had to take mine out because they're very short-rooted, and they less bust up sidewalks, and they're a pain in the butt for everybody. So I agree, if we could use some other tree that would possibly grow, depending on where it is, have a better growth strategy and less problems on the lawn.
Messy habits.
Messy habits, whatever. Anyway, so that's one thing. The other thing I'm, I'm a little concerned about is it's the proximity to the whole shopping center part. What I, I'm sort of worried about, will people really want to live here? Because even though I know that they say, oh, we're, you know, gonna reduce noise, you know, they're... I know what it's like on the back end of a, a shopping center like that, especially a food store, and there's, they've got all kinds of vendors that they can't control. You know what I'm saying? They, they can't tell, they can tell them when to come, but they're slamming doors, there, there's pallets everywhere, there's, there's, you know, the mess from a shopping, like, food store. And so I don't know if, I know that you guys say there's a 10-foot wall there, but I'm wondering if that's enough to really mitigate for the people that are gonna be living there, that... Because I don't want this, I, I mean, it's great to have more housing, obviously, but you don't want it to, to end up, like, people don't live, want to live there, and it ends up to be going south real quickly. That, that's my concern with it. I'm not saying not to do it, I'm just saying I wonder if there's maybe even more mitigation that needs to be done on that wall, or have trees, like, something that grows really fast, like Italian cypress all along there, so there's more of a buffer for people. That's natural. That's just my concerns. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I would just say, Italian cypress bring, bring on a whole other problem of rodents and other things that like to live in those things. But I mean, I hear you, I think, you know, a, and, and this is gonna be a struggle when it comes to any growing suburb like we are that still has these infill spots. The reality is, is that we don't have enough housing, and people are going to... I mean, this is going to be attractive to a lot of people that want to be able to walk to Starbucks and a lot of other things, and they're gonna take the trade-off of, you know, 4:00 in the morning, there might be a semi that comes through there, like, it's just, but, you know, whether this is people that are willing to live in Midtown in Sacramento and a lot of other places that are just gonna be noisy. So I, to your point, I get it, but, you know, on, on the other side, you know, the stores are already there, and these people, and, you know, people are gonna move in, and, you know, if they didn't want noise, this is probably not the, the right place for them to live, period. So, a, and I, I think really, there's only so much you can do. I think you just said a 10-foot wall, but I think it, it actually says right there, a 6-foot wall. Because as soon as you said 10, I got nervous, because... Yeah, so, is it 10 somewhere? Did I miss that?
It's 10 adjacent to the grocery store.
Yeah, okay. I, I wouldn't want to put anything bigger than that. So, so yeah, I mean, I mean, there's, there's only so much you can do, and, and in the end, the people that are moving in here should move in there with their eyes wide open, that, you know, you're going to live along the back of, you know, a, a commercial, a, a commercial facility. But the number of people, even in that neighborhood, that have been asking us, what are we doing with this lot, and why haven't we finished the sidewalk? We've had people come in and talk about that, so I mean, I'm just thrilled that this project's in front of us and moving forward.
All righty. Thank you. Anyone else, anyone with cards on this?
No.
Okay, do we have anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak on this? Okay, seeing none, then we'll close the public hearing on this, and anything else from the council?
So I will move that we...
Just one question about the, the nature of the homeowners association in this case. So they're establishing a homeowners association, they have property in common they need to manage. They're also gonna set CCNRs for the maintenance of each parcel. So every homeowner will have certain enforceable standards, either by the homeowners association or the city.
Yeah, so the, they will have the option to do, have the homeowners association enforce the CCNRs or the city's CCNR enforcement team through court enforcement.
Yeah, I think that's an absolutely critical step for a development like this. These, as Linda said, you know, they're very close together. A little disorder thrown into a neighborhood that spreads could easily flip this place to being a negative sort of environment, instead of a positive environment. So strict enforcement of those CCNRs, I think, is really important for the long-term health of this, as, as we as a city will have to, you know, manage it going forward. So to the extent that these are, you know, stricter guidelines and not very low-level guidelines, that's in our interest. The higher the bar, the better.
Okay, yeah, I, David, I, I agree with you. Having been looking at houses for 15 months now, I totally agree with you. So I will find that, I will move that we find the environmental document adequate and appropriate, that we adopt the resolution for Bradshaw Village Parcel, Bradshaw Village tentative subdivision map and design review, and we introduce in way the first reading of the ordinance for the development agreement between Bradshaw Village Park LLC and the City of Rancho Cordova.
If you have a motion, do I have a second? Thank you, Garrett. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Aye.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sander?
Aye.
Mayor McGarvey?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, item 11.3, ask the city clerk to announce the subject, please.
Actions related to the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan, SSHCP, planned implementing agreement, plan amendment, and mitigation fee schedule.
Mr. Mayor, can I just make one comment? We have, in my amount of time on the council, we have talked about this no less than 20 times, and I'm pretty sure this is a pretty brief item, so if we can get on to the, the next one as quickly as possible, considering...
This is going to be very brief.
Thanks.
Believe me, yes. Um, Linda and Garrett have heard half of this already earlier today. So tonight, we're gonna ask you to adopt four resolutions, and I'll go through each one of these very quickly. The implementing agreement has a purpose, and it just ensures that we're implementing the plan in accordance with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Standards. Revisions of the plan include removing the California Department of Fish and Game because there's, they're not necessary to be part of the agreement, since this is just part of the federal permit, no surprise assurances, yeah.
Not to, not to interrupt, but I really don't think the guys care what those details are.
Okay, sure, so we're gonna revise the implementing agreement. We're doing a plan amendment, replacing out Chapter 9. We're adopting the mitigation fee schedule. It was adopted earlier today by the agency, so now it's time for the three jurisdictions to adopt it. Oops, there's the fee schedule updating from 2015 to 2019.
Yes, it's very expensive.
Yes, it is. And then the last thing we're doing is we're approving, we're adding a deposit to our planning fee schedule so that we can process the permits. So at this time, we're just gonna ask you to approve the four resolutions.
All right, I'm gonna go up, open the public hearing. We have any cards on this?
No, we do not.
Anyone in the audience wish to speak on this? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and ask for motion.
Move the item.
Second.
Right, and roll call, please.
And, okay.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sander?
Aye.
Mayor McGarvey?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I did invite Bill Zebraon here to give you maybe a 20-second update on the permit status.
Yes, he came all this way.
Yeah, he can, he can do it pretty briefly.
Wow, he made him feel guilty, kid, all the way out here.
I can do it in 10 seconds.
Maybe even 25 seconds, I don't know.
There are actually nine total state and federal permit actions related to this. We have made, we now have five of them complete, and the remaining four should be complete by July at the latest. The Federal Endangered Species Act permit, as well as the Clean Water Act permits, and then the state fishing 2081 permit. So that is, we've made tremendous progress, and we're just about there, and we are planning a celebration at the end of July.
And everyone will be invited.
Yeah, that's a great argument for why we need this agreement, when you have to have nine other things in place.
Absolutely.
It's exactly why we need this agreement.
Thank you.
Thank you very good. Well, thank you very much. Going on to regular calendar, item is 12.1, ask the city clerk to announce the subject, please.
Fiscal year 2019 through 2020, Community Enhancement Fund allocations.
Move the item. Oh, sorry. Not gonna be quite that easy, right? But close, close. That was close, I mean...
I'll give Marie just a moment, but I'm Stacy Delaney, the Community Enhancement Analyst for the city. And with me this evening is Lisa Behrens from Finance, and Daniel Leonardi, who also supports the Community Enhancement Fund. And as you know, we spent a lot of time on April 15th going over the initial recommendations on the Community Enhancement Fund. And tonight, we're gonna pick up where we left off, which is covering those items that were pulled out for further discussion. And in addition to that, once we get final direction from you this evening, we'll go over what the next steps are, which is, of course, to bring it back in the form of a resolution on June 3rd. So during the past city council meetings, beginning with the April 1st meeting, and then continuing through the April 15th meeting, we've talked about the fact that council has already approved about $375,000 in funding towards projects that were multi-year agreements. And we did share the initial staff recommendations with you on April 15th, and we're gonna go ahead and move on to those items that were carried over for further discussion. Just to provide a quick recap, we do anticipate that revenues will be $8.2 million in fiscal year 1920. The community grant applications, as they're proposed right now, total $2,128,475. And then in addition to that, there's other categories such as Public Works, Economic Development, Public Safety, et cetera, that total $6,204,000. So we're over, just by a little over, than $132,000 in order to stay within the projected revenues of $8.2 million. So during the April 15th meeting, these were the items that were listed on a board right behind me that we were gonna discuss at this meeting. So we're gonna go ahead and move forward, and I'm gonna start off with those projects where the applicant has since withdrawn their application. So there were three applications that after the April 15th meeting, the applicant actually formally withdrew their application. Two of those applications, the applicant decided to go back and meet with the property owner. In one case, CRPD is a property owner, in the other, it's a school site. And they're gonna work on developing a more realistic set of costs, as well as identify some additional partners who may be able to participate in the project, whether that be an in-kind donation or other type of donation towards the project. So in the case of the Paton Court Solar Project, and in the case of the Community Day School Garden and Mural, they have both withdrawn, and they'll work over the next year on developing a better application that reflects what the true costs are. The Holiday Light Parade, as the committee, they decided to not hold the parade this year. They are exploring the possibility of combining the parade with other events happening in December, and they are also interested in moving the location. So as a committee, they decided not to pursue it this year, and they'll decide in the future if they want to pursue it in future years. So those three items have been listed as zero in the overall document since they've been withdrawn. So under prior council direction in previous years, we did establish a public art fund, and in the case of fiscal year 1920, that fund is recommended at $50,000. At the April 15th meeting, council did request that these applications be forwarded to an arts council for feedback prior to approval. So the purpose of tonight is just having you confirm the dollar amount, and to acknowledge that we will be coming back in the fall of 2019 with a recommendation on the process and a go-forward plan. But at this point, we're not asking for any further direction on applications four through eight. We're just seeking your confirmation of the overall dollar amount, which is recommended at $50,000. So that leaves us with seven items for discussion. They are listed here on the screen, and I'm, my plan is to go over each item. And then if we have public comment cards on those items, we can invite them to speak at that point. So the first item on the screen is the SAC Fit Half Marathon. Our current recommendation is a $10,000 sponsorship towards that event. You had asked staff to reach out to the organizer to find out if that lowered amount of $10,000 would still enable them to bring the marathon within Rancho Cordova for both the start and the stop. And I did have a conversation with Ken Press, and he said, yes, most definitely, they could work with that dollar amount. And there's still some logistics to work out. Right now, the event is planned in 2020, on the same day as Kids' Day in the park. So we would want to ensure that whatever location is, that is identified as the start and stop would not interfere with Kids' Day, since it's a longstanding tradition here in Rancho Cordova. in Rancho Cordova. In case you are curious what the overall costs of the run are, it generally costs about $90,000 to operate the half marathon. And this $10,000 sponsorship would be treated as a title sponsorship for recognition. And one of the things that they do with the funding that they receive is they provide stipends for volunteer organizations that man their aid stations. They anticipate needing 10 different aid station volunteer groups, so each group would receive approximately $500 for their contribution towards that, that day's work. And so it gives opportunities for local youth organizations to actually earn funding, and to also learn some different leadership skills involved with manning an aid station. I believe Ross Johnson is here, and he could speak to the item, and I'm not sure if Ken Press is, but if you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer them. Did Ross Johnson pull a comment card?
He did. I actually have about 17 or 18 public comment cards in a total for 12.1. So would you like me to just pull out these applications?
Yeah, I believe the only two people who would be speaking is either Ross Johnson or Ken Press for item 34. Would council prefer that I go through all of them, or do you want to do one at a time?
Let's go ahead and do this, Ross.
So I do have one for Ross.
Good evening, I'm Ross Johnson, Mr. Mayor and council members. I work with, done the half marathon multiple times. It is a wonderful event. It goes through Rancho Cordova. It showcases the American River Parkway. And in working with Ken, we've identified the fact that there are no major running events in Rancho Cordova. It's the idea, it starts on the other side in William Pond. We'd like to bring it over into Rancho Cordova and start a running program in Rancho Cordova. You are familiar with the Parkway Half Marathon. They are the group that came forward last year, working with the city Rotary Club, the Park District, and put an ADA accessible water fountain in Hagan Park. Their goal is to continue making improvements in the community from the proceeds of the run. So the goal here is two. One is to help rebrand as an event in Rancho Cordova. And I'll be very candid, it was my idea about the helping with the stipends, because after you've sold or bought so many boxes of world's finest chocolate, it's like, could we have an event for you? You only come for three hours, and you get $500 if you're a youth group. So that's what we're looking for, is rebrand it. So it's a Rancho Cordova running event. And we have worked with the Park District, we have worked with the Cordova Community Foundation about locations. And so the team is not set on it being in Hagan Park, probably riverbed it most ideally, because that would bring tourism and leadership coming in through the south side, through Rancho Cordova, to the Parkway versus being on the other side. Thank you. Any questions?
Very good. Thank you. Just reiterating, the difference between the requests and the recommended?
Their initial request, I believe, was 15,000, and we're recommending 10.
And the cutback is the stipends they were proposing for local fundraising?
The stipends remain as is. There was some costs that they felt that they could get through other sources, and some things that they might be able to scale back a little bit, but still be able to bring it here in Rancho Cordova.
Okay. So Ross, this is still a thumbs up. All right, very good. 35.
Okay, 35, which is the Mayther Wrestling Club. At the end of the April 15th meeting, you did ask us to explore this item further. Originally, the school district had not endorsed the project, but after further discussion, they're behind the project. They just didn't endorse it, since it wasn't an actual, like, school sanctioned event. It's a club activity that would take place, in this case, over the summer. So they're fine with a club activity happening. They don't have any reservations about it. I did also meet with Joe Zillis, who I believe here, he is here tonight. He's the head wrestling coach at Mitchell Middle School. And this program is geared for students that are between the ages of eight and 14 years of age. We believe that the funding would cover approximately 50 students' participation in the summer program. Just to give you some current stats, there are about 55 students on the team at Mitchell Middle School right now, and there were about 20 students who participated in a summer-like program that took place last year, that Joe Zillis had organized. And the funding requested, the $8,500, goes towards t-shirts and shorts that the students would wear. It would be for medals, snacks, first aid supplies, the insurance that's required, as well as the scholarships to cover 50 students. Like I said, Joe is here if you have further questions for him.
I have a question, or two.
Sure.
It's good to see you here, Joe.
Thank you.
Comment one is, I hope you become involved with the Rancho Cordova Athletic Association, because that's something that would help you promote your program in wrestling in the community.
Absolutely.
As well as the other sports, it's sort of a hand-in-hand mutual aid society.
Yeah, anything that would help to promote the sport itself. It's something that, you know, I've recognized since coming on as a coach at Mitchell, is that, you know, it's kind of, it's a dwindling sport regionally, and particularly in Rancho Cordova, we've kind of fallen beyond the curve since. I've grown up here and seen the sport, you know, go through its ebbs and lows. But anywhere where we could gain some footing to advertise, you know, such as the, you know, the athletic associations and whatnot, would certainly bring, I think, a boom to it. And my goal certainly is, you know, it's kind of self-serving. I want to promote the sport, I want to see it grow and build up into our high school sports, and, you know, give that firm basis, much like we're seeing in other districts, other school districts, even other schools within the district, they have these baseline-type programs. So that's, that's my goal there.
You just said the magic words. I think it's great for the kids that are involved, for this program only. It's great if they continue on and gain confidence, and continue to develop all those critical things they get through youth sports. It's even better if that continues on into high school, and feeds into a high school program that helps kids at that level.
Absolutely.
So yeah, that's, that's all wins, as far as I'm concerned.
And currently, we've got those connections already with high school, where they help us sponsor tournaments during the year. We go work there, tournaments, so we're gaining that, that trust and interaction there already. So this just keeps them moving in that direction. Starts them a little earlier.
Does Mills have a wrestling program?
They do have a wrestling program. This would be advertised over there as well.
So do you, do you two coordinate with each other in some way?
We do. Yeah, absolutely. We put on the only middle school tournament in the area, sponsor that every, every December. And Mills can, or Mills does come and participates in that, and we obviously invite them, invite everybody in our league to do that, and beyond. But we're always in touch with them to borrow mats and trade you information, that type of thing, and that's the Coach Terry Douglas over there.
Thank you.
Yep, sure. Other questions?
No, but thank you for putting in the time and taking care of the kids.
Yeah. So my only comment on this, because David, I think you said everything I would have said anyways. It is a three-year request, but we don't tend to do that, especially the first time that they're asking for it. So this is a recommendation for one year, correct?
One year.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
One year as a pilot program, and then evaluate.
Yeah. Great.
All right, very good. Thank you. Okay, 47.
So item 47 is the CHAT Summer Camp. And like the others, you had asked for additional information about this application. And this application is really more of a workforce development and a leadership training program for Rancho Cordova students. It's geared for Rancho Cordova students that are between the ages of 13 to 18 years of age, to spend that summer program and actually learn valuable skills that they can take into future employment. So they will be involved with planning, instructing, and supervising activities for the young children at the CHAT school. So they'll be working with teachers of the deaf, they'll be working with audiologists, speech therapists, and the children and the parents of those children. And this summer program is open to students that attend the CHAT Center here in Rancho Cordova. And so the counselors in training will work with the teachers to provide music instruction, art, math, science, language, as well as dramatic play during that four-week summer camp period. I do believe that Leisha King is here from CHAT, if you have any further questions.
What was the question? I don't.
You guys had, you were curious what the funding would be used towards, and it's really towards the support needed to bring in all these teens, so that they can develop actual workforce training skills, and then hopefully in the future, they might choose to work with children of the deaf or other students, just as a career pathway. So it's more of a workforce development program.
There was a question of whether we were funding, you know, the region's kids at a local site, as opposed to benefiting our kids, our students.
So this is geared towards recruiting Rancho Cordova teens to be counselors in training, as opposed to paying the summer camp fees of a student attending the school.
And the summer camp fee is where?
There is no fee that's, they're not asking for the fee to be covered. So there isn't a cost associated with the camp, that's not what they're asking for. They're asking for the support staff needed to actually train the teens and supervise the teens, so that they can provide or act as counselors in training over the four-week period.
Well, I think they clarified what we were wondering about, so, yeah, fund it.
I have three speaker cards for this item.
Okay.
Well, can we just remind, anyone's allowed to speak. You did just get thumbs up that you're probably going to get funded, so take that comment with what it's worth. Come on up if you still want to talk.
Leisha King?
I'm not going to speak.
You can.
But my kids are.
Go. Go ahead, it's cool.
It's good practice.
That's pretty good, I like that, yeah. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Kendall Keem. I'm 15 years old. I'm a freshman at Casa Robe High School. I'm, and I am deaf. With the help of my cochlear implants, I learned to listen and talk at the CHAT Center with my sister Colby. Two years ago, I was a counselor in training during the CHAT Summer School. I really enjoyed the experience. I liked working with the kids and seeing their skills improved. It really felt good to help the kids like me. Through my experiences, I found out that I like working with kids, and might want to choose teaching as a career. I think, I think the CIT program would be great for teenagers in Rancho Cordova. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Colby King. I am a 15-year-old student at Casa Robe High School, and I am also a freshman. I was born profoundly deaf, and attended the CHAT Center to learn to listen and talk. When I was 13, I was also a counselor in training at, during the CHAT Summer School. I got to work with a teacher who was in charge of doing the math and science. She helped me develop a lesson to help the students make slime. At the time, I enjoyed making the slime. It was fun to take each class through the different steps to make it, answer the questions, and help them learn something new. I would love to be a CIT again, but this summer, I need to babysit to help pay for a car. I know Rancho Cordova teenagers would enjoy this experience. Thank you.
Those are the speaker cards I have for that item, but there's one speaker card I have that I don't know what application it was for, so I don't know if you want to speak on any of these items. Chris Warden? Is there a specific item you wanted to speak to?
It's the 916-Sync application. So it is this item.
Perfect.
Thank you. Mayor, council members, I'm Chris Warden. I'm here tonight, in my capacity as board member for 916-Sync, which you know helps turn young people into published authors, helps them gain skills and literacy. And I'm honestly here just to tell you that we value the partnership that we've had with you in the past. Knock on wood, they will continue going forward. Also, I just wanted to make sure, to let you know that Stacy and Daniel did a great job. It's always a blessing when you have a, when you're a nonprofit and you have staff that is knowledgeable and responsive and on top of things, so we wanted to extend our gratitude to them as well. But seriously, we're going to change some lives, and we are so grateful for your support. Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
So we'll move on to item 59, which is the Cordova Community Food Locker upgrades item. And this was one item that we were still doing some analysis when we met on April 15th, so we needed to complete that, and then also have a conversation with Walt Little from the Food Locker. So we were able to do that following the April 15th meeting. Staff is recommending $49,000 towards a variety of efforts at the Food Locker, one being the purchase of a commercial freezer, the other being the creation of a website. We felt the website would be used in, not only to connect residents with the services they offer, but also as a way for donors to make contributions throughout the year, and to do ongoing fundraising efforts. And then to also help with the ongoing operations, which includes collections, inspections, sorting, storing, and the distribution of goods. So our recommendation is $49,000 towards those efforts. I believe that Walt Little was here, I'm not sure if he's still, there he is. And Ross Johnson is also here, and I believe they may have filled out a public speaker's card.
Can I ask a quick budget question, just for Stacy? So, looking at this, it's just this page, right? As far as the ones that we hadn't?
Correct.
Thumbed up or down? Incorporated, because it's just kind of hard to follow on the spreadsheet. If we incorporate, if we say yes to all of this, how far over budget are we going to be? 133, got it, okay.
And 28 cents.
No cents, we got rid of the cents.
More or less.
I just rounded up. I don't even know what you said when you started saying hundreds of dollars, I just, okay. So, or a hun, so I just want to make sure that I'm putting this in perspective as I'm adding, because I don't want to add this in my head.
That includes everything that's listed on the screen.
That's listed here, we'll be 130 grand over.
That is correct.
Okay. Cool, thanks.
Yes.
And again, reminding folks that that's the smallest overage we've had so far since we've been doing this. So the likelihood that you're going to get funded today, really high. Go ahead.
Say something nice.
Thank you.
Hey, I spent 40 years in this venue, it's just lovely being here tonight. I just want to take a moment to thank the members of the city council representing the city of Rancho Cordova for your ongoing support of the Food Locker. It's a, I think we all agree, it's a very necessary support for the needy of this community. And I wanted to, besides that, emphasize one point that is vaguely related to this that somebody made earlier about the post office collections that go down to the Sacramento Food Bank services, and that we get some of that back. Yeah, but, the challenge is that I've been working for the better part of the 30 years that I've created this thing, to help people understand that everything that leaves this community, everything that leaves this community and goes downtown, we have access to it. They get it for free, we have to buy it. And in those 30 years, I've only had one occasion to go downtown and actually buy food, because we've never had the finances to be able to afford even what's leaving our community. I'm not telling anybody what to do, because they have a right to give to whom they ever want, and that's fine with me. I'm just trying to make it, people aware of the fact that we have a big need in this community, and I would really like the people to consider what they're doing.
Yeah.
So, but thank you.
I would also just point out that, and I know Sean's not hearing more from Soilborne, but the Gleaners program and stuff that Soilborne is now running within the city is going to you, not to, not to downtown anymore.
Yeah, this year, but in, yes, and that's correct. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sean's not here, he was presenting earlier, but this was the first year that, if you have somebody come and pick the oranges in your backyard or something, they're going to you, not downtown anymore.
And as I've been mentioned with Stacy and the mayor, we've got big, big challenges in this area, because of the laws that have been reenacted, or enacted most recently. So... So the future is kind of interesting, looking for how do we take care of our needy in this community? And I look forward to working with you to trying to solve some of those problems. But currently, thank you very much for your concern and your participation with our attempt to solve this problem.
Are some of the other things with the court decisions that have been made, that make things rather difficult for you too?
Yes, there's no such thing technically as an independent contractor anymore. And so we can't get volunteers to be our drivers and things because we are forced now to pay their minimum wages and all this other kinda stuff, which is, I have nothing against except for the fact that it puts us out of business.
And the food bank is doing the same thing, correct?
This is across, this is across the state of California. All your 501(c)(3)Cs are having the same basic challenges trying to find people in circumstances to help do the things that need to get done. So yes, it's a very extremely difficult challenge. And we're waiting for, hopefully, legislature to make some kind of definition that works. But having spent 40 years in that venue, I'm not holding my breath. Yes, all right. Anything else? Thank you again for your help.
Ross Johnson.
I just wanted to say thank you again. This money allows us to meet some of the goals of the city. And the fact that we can just give the minimum stuff out prescribed by federal law, but we can get the Soilborne foods. We can get in sort and be able to provide people more than just the federal mandated. And that's what we wanna do. When people come, we want them to walk away with healthy food. So that's why this will help us do that. Thank you very much.
One quick addition that I think would be important for you to know. We talk about this federal man, this federal food that we get that's, that comes out of the Army Depot. When people come to our door and we give them the federal food, federal food, if that's all we get to give them, they get one grocery bag with six items. That's it for a month. Just put things into perspective here.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate that. I don't know if we have anyone who wants to go any, other than saying yes on that one and then going on.
Yes.
Number 72.
Number 72 is the party application. So council had asked us to look at this one as well. This application is to essentially bring students from Cordova High School's health class to a field trip experience at a hospital in Folsom, California. And we looked at this program in detail because there was some interest by council to look at this more closely. After further investigation, some of the things that we noted was that some of the fundamental things that we were trying to look at and verify had to do with pricing for the program. On the applicant's website, there's no pricing details. And when we asked for the information and spoke to her on the phone a couple different times, that pricing information was still not available. We did do some research and reached out to some of the other school sites that had participated in the party program going back to approximately 2017. And those school sites paid $500 on average, whereas the funding for this program was essentially about $26,000. So we felt like, without actually having prices that we could validate and test with other markets, that this was too much for what the program was gonna be offering and that we would like to see additional partnerships in the future as well as some of the business financials in place before we could make a recommendation to fund this program. So right now, the staff recommendation stands at no funding. I believe the applicant is here. I'm not sure if she filled out a card.
Angela Fitzgerald. Would you, would you like to come forward and speak?
Hi, Angela.
Hi. Well, the program started back in 2012. And as far as the, well, you know, I'm reading this paper and it's like, ensure a safe and inviting, whoops, can't see. Live well, community, promote positive image, empower responsible citizenship. To me, that's all the basis and the foundation of where it starts. And when I started in 2012, the schools didn't have, I never had to submit a, a total budget because what happened was the school started out by, we really want this, so we're gonna charge our students a field trip fee. So the students, all the students were paying, you know, $25, $30 for the field trip fee. And then, you know, I'd go to back to school night. Somebody write me a check for $1,000. A volunteer came at the program and wrote a check for $40,000. So what it was, was I didn't have to present, you know, that people just, once you got them there, State Farm came and was like, wow, you know, this makes a difference. And I have a best friend who is, was a teacher here for 25 years in Rancho. And he attended the program and he goes, this is what these kids need. I've worked with them for 25 years. And I said, I know. I moved here two years ago and I've taken on this personal interest that I care about this community. I'm from Folsom. I lived there 20 years. And I watched this grow and I watched schools grow and I watched them benefit from it. And once you start it, even if you start it with a couple of programs, I talked to my State Farm representative. He goes, you know, have them have a program. Let me invite all my reps there. He goes, you know, let the city show they care. We'll get it started. You know, I'll up your funding. And then, you know, I choose to where that funding can go. So of course, my passion right now is here. And I wanna see these kids benefit from what the other kids have benefited in the other communities from. And I've kinda switched gears to wanna see this community really thrive. I live here now. And, you know, this is our next generation. They're the ones that are gonna be the responsible adults. They're the ones that are gonna be making all these things happen. But not unless you give them the tools to do that. And that's just where it is. It's a passion for me. That's where the money has come from. The police came to the program three years later after I started it and said, oh, we get money from Office of Traffic and Safety. We'll just write you into our grant. You know, so they just wrote it in and, you know, Office and Staff Traffic and Safety came to the program, said, this is amazing. Here's $50,000. So I never really had to go to Folsom High and go, okay, you know, this is this much a program because it just has happened as people attend it and see the value. And that's how it would happen here in the same way. They see a city start it. I invite the people out. I've already got a counselor that's volunteered to do free counseling. I've got someone setting up a place where.
Your time is up. Please wrap up your comments.
Okay. A place where they get a retreat for kids. I've got things already rolling. And I would like to see the city start. And then as I invite other people and investors in where they go, wow, you know, we really wanna help the city out too. I think next year you would see, you know, wow, there would be money coming in. So that's it. I thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions from the council on this?
I think it's potentially valuable. I'd probably like to see just a little more work. I think the comment staff made is appropriate. We just need some sort of a feeling of what the, what the plan is. Sort of bigger picture.
Yeah, I mean.
And what the partnerships, you know, might be or partnerships that we could facilitate.
Yeah, I, my concern with this one is, you know, the relationships that we built with the school districts, especially through Measure H, has been trusting the school districts to tell us what their priorities are. So we have a field trip budget, don't we? Did we, did we have one for this year? So.
$15,000, I believe.
So I mean, if this is a priority, I mean, $15,000 doesn't go a long way when you're talking about what the costs are that are being quoted here. But ultimately, we are funding field trips. If the schools and the superintendents believe that this is the highest priority, then that's what they should be asking for. But I think, we've worked very hard to get out of the business of trying to set the priorities for the school districts and allowing them to do it. And I think we need to respect that process because a lot of us serve on two-by-twos. David and I also serve on the education form that hasn't met for a while, so to speak, or as I'm remembering. But we've spent a lot of time engaging our superintendents in a very genuine way to ask them to tell us what their priorities are. And this, this one for the cost and what it is, didn't reach the top. And I think we need to respect that process. So again, yeah, this all sounds really great. It sounds very expensive for the number of students that it's reaching. And if there are other funders out there, you know, maybe those need to be identified first and then we can be talking about matching, which is what we do with a lot of the applicants that identify, you know, that have come to us saying, you know, for $50,000, we're bringing in $150,000. I mean, boy, you know, I see the Boys and Girls Club. I see Rebuilding Together, both of which have leveraged the heck out of their grants that they're, they're bringing here prior, I mean, at the first application. So, so that, that's my feeling for now is I would stay with the staff's recommendation and see if it can't be, it can't fit into the field trips budget or do some more research for next year.
Thank you. And Linda? Righty. Well then, let's go on with the next item. Thank you for the information on that. 74.
Yes. The next item is item 74, which was the passenger van that would be utilized by three different school sites, Kenny, Prospect, and Walnutwood. So you had asked us to explore the option of a lease versus the purchase of a van. And we did speak to the school district. They don't actually lease any of their vehicles. They purchase them and then they maintain them within their fleet, you know, up to 20 years in some cases. If it's helpful, we did recently reach out to Cordova High School to see what the utilization is on the vans that they have since in the past we purchased two vans for Cordova High School as well as for the middle schools. And, excuse me, over the last nine months, they were checked out 60 times. And those aren't single trips. In some cases, they were checked out for multiple days. They were used for a whole variety of things, including the mock program, cross-country, college tours, different clubs such as math club, journalism club. It was used by both Boys and Girls Tennis, the band, ROTC, the Ag Academy, the Culinary Academy, student government, volleyball, construction class. I could go on and on. So they are being utilized. And that's, the two that I mentioned are at Cordova High School. I could get similar evidence from the two middle schools, but this van is being requested for use by Kenny, Prospect, and Walnutwood. I do believe there's some individuals here from the school district if you have any further questions. But at this point, we're recommending $40,000, which is similar to the amount that we awarded in the past for the purchase of a van of that size.
I'm fine with it. The only thing I would ask, it sounds like you've done a lot of research on it, but even 60 trips doesn't seem like it's being used that much. And so at some point, I don't, and I don't know how we, you know, invest in technology or, I know Cyrus, you and I have had a conversation about using our enterprise account or something else like that to rent these that would drastically reduce the, the out-of-pocket costs that we have to do when we do these. And even if it's leasing these for a given entity and making the payments or something. So again, I would just, I would just try to encourage that if we can look at alternative ways to pay for these types of things that might save us from a cash flow perspective. Because 40 grand when it really is 10,000 a year, right, to lease it or something along those lines, right?
It is roughly 10,000. It's about 850 per month.
Right. So again, and the life of this van in eight years, they're, you know, they're gonna want another one, right? And how much could we have saved by just financing it and doing it in a different way? So, so I'm, I'm fine with it. I just think that we need to start, especially when we talk about buying vehicles. Because I know we had, we had fleet cars here that, after, what was it, eight years, Cyrus, they had like 15,000 miles on them. That was not a good use of our money. So, okay. I'm off of my soapbox and I'm moving on, but I'm fine with it.
Yeah, just as an aside though, it's interesting about finding some other way of doing it. It's a shame we can't find some of the businesses here who use the vans and then they replace them and then, I'm not sure where those vans go. But I know I've been trying to find someone that would do that for either the school or for the food locker, for that matter. Right now, they have to use their big truck to go around wherever they're gonna go. If they had a van like that, they could go get some, some of these smaller items and taken care of without having to use that big truck all the time. So there's, you know, let's find out what we can do. I like the idea of finding out more information about that.
I think this is the same gap that we've discussed with regard to youth sports and extracurricular activities. At the, in other parts of this district, in other schools in the region, parents will pay a transportation fee or parent-teacher organization can acquire a van like this and donate it to the school. That doesn't really function here in the, particularly in the older part of Rancho Cordova. So this is filling that gap and I think it's a necessary fill.
I do have a speaker card for this item. Peter?
Yes. Hello, Peter.
Good evening, city council, mayor, city manager. Actually, I'm here to speak about it for Principal Michelle Flowers, who's not able to be here tonight because her daughter's being recognized for a scholarship. And this is my colleague, Annie Conover, who is the principal at Walnutwood. This is a little different request in regards to the van. And I understand what Mr. Terry is discussing in regards to utilizing it. Kenny and Prospect would like to use it, especially during inclement weather, to pick up their kids and bring them to school. They have a population of students who are not a residential area. They're from all over the city of Rancho Cordova. So it makes it difficult for them sometimes, especially with rainy weather like this year particularly. If they had this van, they would utilize it to have someone pick up the kids, get them to school, make sure that they're there.
I'm really glad you told me that.
And that's, and that's something that's totally different.
That's very helpful to understand.
Yeah, no, this is different than different uses of Cordova High School or Mills or Mitchell. Whereas this is gonna be utilized to attend one of the principal, one of the mottos of our superintendent, ABC, A being for attendance specifically. So this would help utilize that and get kids picked up. They're also trying to start an after-school athletic program competing against other school districts, but they don't wanna take a huge van. They would utilize this vehicle to help them get their kids to those places as well to offset the cost of transportation. And I don't know if there's anything else you wanna add.
Hello. Thank you for letting me speak for a minute. My name is Annie Conover. I'm the principal at Walnutwood. And again, I am the principal of a very small independent study, Students with Medical Needs and Pregnant Teen Program. We too have very unique needs in what we are trying to access this van for. Kenny has a couple of programs such as their culinary program and their welding program. Our students don't have any access to any types of programs such as that. So this van would let us utilize transportation for our students because we have no transportation in independent study. It's part of ed code. So this would give us in between getting to Walnutwood and possibly over to Kenny to access some of those CTE programs as well as our satellite site up in Folsom. So again, as Mr. Maroon so well said, that these are kind of unique needs. And that's why we kind of came together with Kenny and Walnutwood because we are both very small schools and we wanted to utilize the van at its most potential. So thank you for your consideration. It is a very unique and unusual circumstance compared to our larger comprehensive sites. But it would open up trips to outside places to educate our students in the community. Thank you.
I do have one comment, not to complicate this, but when I spoke to the school district, both the chief financial officer as well as others, for liability reasons, I was told they cannot use it to pick up students to take them to and from their home. So I do agree that it could be used to help bridge the gap of taking students from one campus to another. But it's my understanding that they could not be picked up from their home because of liability.
We'll let everyone work that out later.
Yeah. And that was my understand with Mrs. Flowers as well is that it possibly might be at a light rail station because many of these kids come through light rail and bus access.
But that wouldn't be any enforcement issue that we would be, that, that's between you and them.
That's not our issue.
Right.
Enjoy the van.
Thank you very, very much.
Very interesting. Yes. Thank you. All right. Last one there on the list.
So the last one on the list, it has a different number. So the last one on the list, it has a different numbering system because this has to do with a council-driven request, so that stands for City Council Number Six. And this is a summer school option for Ranch or Cordova students that attend school within Sac City Unified School District. This would specifically serve incoming students, and it would be housed at Abraham Lincoln Elementary School, which is one of the schools in the Lincoln Village neighborhood. The cost to do five classes of students would be $32,000. That's based upon kind of a fixed rate of 20,000 for the first three classes, and then about 6,000 for each additional class. I believe that Matt Turkey from the district is still here. If you have any specific questions, he could certainly provide more information.
So Council, if I could jump in. So Councilmember Gatewood and I had our two-by-two with Sac City Unified a few months ago. For those of you not following at home all of the fun stuff that Sac City Unified has been dealing with recently, they did get their budget extended for another 18 months or so, as far as the insolvency issues. But one of the conversations that we were having was the fact that if there was to be a state takeover, or even the loom of a state takeover in the next 18 months, that what would that do to Lincoln Village and to people wanting to stay within those schools? One of the conversations that we had with the superintendent, and this was even going back to last year, was kind of his signature educational program was going to be what's called an opt-out, or, excuse me, an opt-in summer school program for all students that are behind in their attainment of English or math. And so if they're not at grade level, they would be automatically opted into summer school, and then their parents would have to actively take them out. But basically, if you're not at grade level, you're going to be signed up for summer school. Two weeks after he announced the idea, he had to pull it back because of the budget issues, so he never actually got to launch it. So at our conversations, Garrett and I both asked, what would it cost to have this at one of our schools to serve in our neighborhood? So this would be the only school in Sac City Unified that would actually get to do what he had intended to do, and it's only going to cost 32 grand for the year. The initial estimates were actually much higher than that, and I think they kind of whittled down and figured out exactly what they needed. So this would be grades one through five, and it basically gives something, and again, we didn't go to AMWEN or to Carver, because it is a Waldorf program, which highly believes in not teaching reading and other skill sets at certain age groups, and to have summer off anyways, too. So it just didn't fit for their model. But we thought it would work for Abraham Lincoln, and it would really be kind of that thing to set apart our schools from the rest of Sac City Unified. And the one thing I'll say is really nice about it, because Cyrus knows this, is that, and I just talked about how great of a relationships we now have with our superintendents, one of the issues that we've run into, and we've said this more than once, is to our superintendents, you know, find those things that we can help that says that when you live in Ranch Cordova, this is something that you get that's not offered at the rest of the school sites, right? And usually, the answer that we get is, well, from an equity standpoint, we don't want to do that. We don't want the schools here to have something that the other kids don't. The amazing thing with Sac City Unified is when we brought up this idea, and we said we want to try to implement your idea, and he's like, great, I'll find out how much it costs. There wasn't a question at all. It was like, if you're willing to invest in your students, we'll take you up on it. So I think it's a really great opportunity to, again, make a statement with our school sites that are, you know, in a school district with some financial hardships, to say that, you know, this is something that will be special for Lincoln Village.
You know, saying that is really important, and it really doesn't make any difference to me what school district we're talking about. We're talking about kids. And they need the help sometimes, and this would be something that first to fifth grade, good heavens. I think 70, 32,000 would be definitely well-spent. And again, it's not, to heck with the school district's name, I'm looking for the kids.
Yeah.
How many kids are we talking about?
It would be five classes, so the max would be 20-something.
We're looking at 15?
Yeah, come on. We're on TV. Well, we will be on TV, so they got to hear you.
Hi, everyone. Thank you. My name's Matt Turkey. I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction, and I'm here on behalf of Superintendent Aguilar and the members of the board to, first of all, thank you for the consideration of this, lay out a few things, and then, of course, answer any questions. So we would be looking, the research says that you only want to have about 15 kids in a classroom, especially when you're in the K through three size, for kids who have fallen behind, if you're doing, you're going over things which they didn't get the first time, right? So we'd be looking at, first of all, kids who, they've fallen behind in reading, okay? The research around kids reading by third grade is really, really clear, and so being able to help, you know, help the kids read by then is huge. And then the same for fourth and fifth grade students. Again, if they've fallen behind, the summer is just, it's a wonderful opportunity to catch them back up again. So we'd be looking at 15 kids per class. The reason the price was higher before is, at this stage in the game, it's actually pretty difficult to get teachers, right? Because we turn around and say, hey, we need teachers in about three weeks, right? So we, I've spoken to the principal, and she assures me that we can, we know we can get some teachers, but we're not going to be able to get as many as we first thought we might be able to, just because of the late date. So we're looking at 15 in a class. We'd be looking at two hours of reading and ELA, and an hour-long of math every day for six weeks, four days a week.
And just to point out, if we give the go-ahead today, this would be this summer.
Mm-hmm.
So.
So it's five classrooms potentially? I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, 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 no.
Five classrooms, 15 per room?
That's correct.
And are there, there was some discussion last time that Elk Grove was not doing any summer school, Folsom Cordova was not doing any summer school. Did we hear anything else about that? Anybody in the back of the room know? Is there any summer school going on in Folsom Cordova or Elk Grove school districts?
I believe Folsom Cordova is still doing special education as well as high school. That was what I had heard.
Kimberly from the Boys and Girls Club, you're nodding your head. Is there summer school in?
Elk Grove doing.
Okay. You think so? Okay.
Okay. Because last time, we discussed this, and then someone else stood up and said, there's no summer school in Folsom Cordova.
I didn't think there was.
Okay.
But again, this is a unique approach that it's not just summer school, like if you want to go. This is summer school for kids that are not at grade level, which is really, this was the idea that Superintendent Aguilar wanted to do, and this was going to be kind of his signature, and he had to give it up because of budget constraints. So I think it'd be really interesting to do this, see how students are performing, and see if this isn't something that we could sell at other sites, maybe in the city. But again, if we hearken back to like our promise program conversations, right? If you live in Ranch Cordova, this is something that you get that you don't get if you live somewhere else. And I get, you know, in this case, I think, you know, it's, it has merit, it makes a lot of sense, and it's not that expensive at the end of the day.
No, for 32 grand to take care of that many kids in our community, to help them get back to grade level is, it's almost a necessary need.
Yeah.
Without question. Okay, I'm really excited about the program. I can't wait to see how it goes.
Okay. Thank you. Want to take a vote? So I think three of us have said that we want to do it. Okay.
Four, five.
Five? Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Council.
Thanks.
So before I move on, do we want to take a roll call vote or do a motion on these, since these were the items that you specifically pulled out?
Second.
Aye. Oh, shoot, go ahead.
When we do a roll call?
I think I tried to do this a while ago.
You did at the beginning.
Do it again anyways.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Yep.
Vice Mayor Sander?
Yes.
Mayor McGarvey?
Aye.
Thank you.
This slide just is to show you that there were a few items that we had recommended to actually get pulled out of one of the funds that you created. This was done just in an attempt to get you closer to a balanced budget. So we didn't change any of the dollar amounts on this screen based upon what we discussed on April 15th. It's strictly that we're showing you that these items are going to be pulled out of the Community Partnership Fund, and you would still have approximately $45,000 available in that fund for future projects.
I have, I have speaker cards for some of these items?
Yes.
Reminding them again that you. So let's see, application number 17, I see, is up on the screen. So I have two for application number 17.
Is this from Ankhar?
Yes.
Okay.
So Jeet, did I say that correctly? Okay. And then following Jeet will be Lakshmi.
Respected council members, Vice Mayor and Mayor, thank you for allowing me to speak. I am here regarding the application number 17, and specifically, it is related to a festival. We call it Festival of Knowledge. And just as the name sounds, this festival is primarily to promote and showcase the knowledge and wisdom focused mainly towards the youth. And the handouts that has been shared with you is basically two flyers of the event that was held this year earlier, as well as the previous year. And we are very grateful that the event got partial support from the city of Ranch Cordova. And not sure what is actually the, you know, the reasoning, but when we looked at the recommendation for this year, we saw that our application got combined with, you know, a couple of other applications, and we are fine with the recommendation. So no concern with the recommendation, but our main focus festival, which was the Festival of Knowledge, was, you know, was not even mentioned, which means it's not denied, not even recommended for approval. And I'm standing in front of you just to, you know, requesting reconsider our application for Festival of Knowledge. And I have basically three reasons for, you know, for asking for the recommendation. The first one is, you know, this particular event is focusing, focuses, as I said, only on youth. If you see the flyer that I've shared, you will see the various competition or exhibition that we do during this event, and they are all targeted from youth of age group two till 16. So it focuses on the youth. Second reasoning is, we are not looking for full funding support. We are, you know, we are looking for partial funding support, just like the previous years. We are mindful that, you know, we try, we should all, you know, we should try our best to be self-sufficient, you know, for all of our event. So this particular event also, apart from, you know, looking for support from the city, we rely on our member contribution, we rely on corporate fundings, we rely on our volunteers for their hours, as well as in-kind matching. And last but not least, the most important thing was, because we were able to get some support in the previous years, we could promote this event in a much bigger way, to the extent that families came, you know, from almost all cities or counties of Northern California. In fact, we have a few families who came and attended from the city of Reno, Nevada, and we are asking that please continue to support this particular festival. And I'll be happy to answer any question.
Next speaker is Lakshmi.
Good evening, council members and mayor. I'd like to add to what Jeet's just said. We really want to thank you for all the support you have shown us in previous years, for really supporting diversity and inclusion, which I think is so important. And we do bring about 500 to 600 families together, so any support you can provide us will be greatly appreciated. We wanted to bring some youth today, but they have school testing, and so they're busy preparing, so we couldn't bring them here. But I bet you would have enjoyed hearing how they get engaged and what they take away from this festival. So we are really kindly requesting you to reconsider this funding for us. Thank you.
Any other cards?
Not for the items that are on the screen.
I'll move the SASS recommendation.
Second.
All right. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sander?
Aye.
Mayor McGarvey?
Aye. Thank you.
Now we're on to Donald's screen. So you had asked the question, where are you going to remove it from? So just to remind you, the projected budget is 8.2 million. Based upon everything that has been preliminarily recommended, we have a total of $8,332,000 in change. And at the last meeting, one council member did suggest that perhaps half of whatever we were over by would be taken from Infrastructure and Public Works, as well as Community and Economic Development. We didn't actually have a chance to discuss that in any detail, so I'm not sure if that's council's desire or not.
It's what we've done for three years in a row. Four years in a row, if we do it now.
Okay, but I believe, unless it's not applicable anymore, the city manager's point has generally been that sometimes things don't come together the way they're supposed to, and they're typically ends up being a little bit of money that's, that doesn't get committed and gets reinvested into the fund. And so for this very small amount of 130,000, it would seem like
You nailed it.
Nature would just sort of cover it ultimately.
So my only concern with that, and Cyrus, feel free to jump in after I say this, is I think in the past years, that's been very, like, the first year, that was very true. There was a ton of things that we committed to that never were going to see the light of day, for a whole host of reasons. We said, yeah, we'll fund them, and park horses cost triple what we thought, and all kinds of other stuff. Stacy and her team have gotten a lot better at this, so there's usually not a lot of funds laying around come the end of June that they haven't spent. I mean, how much was it this past year that was left over that we didn't spend?
I can't remember the exact figure, but there's very few projects that actually drop off.
Right.
There might be a few that come in a little under budget, but not like it was in the very first few years of the Community Enhancement.
Stacy, how much over were you, did you collect last year? Over the number?
Collect?
Like, because we had a different number, and it went up.
You mean what the projected revenues were?
Yeah, how much did actually really come in from that?
Do you have the figure, Lisa?
I can look it up.
She's looking it up.
I think while she's looking up, there are two variables. One is we do our best projection of the revenues or the sales tax. Sometimes they do come in a little different than what we projected. I think in the years, past years, they've been higher than what we had estimated, so there's a possibility that the numbers will be higher. We also have cases where the, as Stacy mentioned, actual costs are different. So I think it would be good to, and appropriate for the council to give us the broad direction, how you want to adjust it, with the flexibility that if the revenues come higher than expected, or some of the projects are reduced in cost, then we will restore the programs that you cut, or you choose to cut them.
Yeah, I mean, I would probably echo what David said last time, and I think it's what we've done most years, is split the overage out of Infrastructure and Public Works and Community and Economic Development, with the caveat that if we do end up collecting more than we expected, that those would be the first things that would be made whole.
Second.
Oh, was that a motion?
Yep.
Aye. Aye.
And as City Manager, what was, is that something that we have done?
That should be fine. I think it's, we have some additional slides. Stacy, do you want to bring those up related to?
Yes.
Is there a specific line item for any, for these programs that you?
I'd rather staff, I mean, those are staff-led initiatives. I think what we've done in the past is essentially said, this is about what you have to spend. You've identified projects, but some of them, you might end up replacing them. I think I'd rather trust Albert and Micah to decide, in working with you, what things to put on. Albert and Micah to decide, and working with you, what things to put off or to delay till later in the year.
Percent across the board, opportunity-based, whatever.
Yeah.
So 65,000, so divided by two, 130 divided by two, between the two, public works and economic.
Yeah.
Okay, that's clear.
And, yeah, those two guys back there can talk to you and figure out what they can put off.
66, 237 and a half, I think.
And 22 cents.
No sense.
Stacy, before I proceed, are there any additional comment cards?
I have four additional public speaker cards on different applications that have not been discussed yet. So is it a good time for me to call those out?
Yes.
Okay, Robin Moyer?
Reminding you again that everyone, if you were recommended, just got funded.
Robin Moyer
Retired.
Is absent and has left. Okay. The second public speaker card I have is for Dan Palmer.
Yeah, I hear what he's saying.
Thank you. Third public speaker card
Thank you.
I have is Deborah Banks. Are you in the room? Deborah is not in the room. And Caitlin Bathke? Okay. Would you like to speak?
Thank you for your patience. My boss would not be happy if I did not. Come on. So hello, mayor and esteemed council members. Thank you so much for having me tonight. My name is Caitlin Bathke, and I'm here representing Habitat for Humanity of Greater Sacramento and our staff, volunteers, and homeowner partners. This year, Habitat for Humanity of Greater Sacramento will complete 50 home repairs for qualified low-income homeowners, seniors, and veterans, many of them in need of critical and exterior and roof repairs in order to avoid displacement from their homes due to deferred maintenance they cannot afford on their low or fixed incomes. It is the most home repairs we have ever done, and yet it is still not nearly enough to meet the growing need. This past year, we had over 1,000 inquiries from low-income homeowners, seniors, and veterans in need of our critical repair services. The inquiries received come from all across Sacramento and Yolo Counties, such as one from George Myers, a Rancho Cordova resident and Desert Storm Navy veteran, who wrote to us that his roof is leaking and he can't afford to fix it. "Can you help me?" he asked. George, along with hundreds of other inquiries, is currently on our waiting list, but if this grant request were to be approved, he, along with a dozen other existing Rancho Cordova home repair inquiries, could move to the top of our list to apply and be qualified for a home repair program, since a dedicated source of funding would be available here in their area. The $35,000 in community enhancement funding we are requesting and you are approving, so thank you, through the city of Rancho Cordova will provide for capacity expansion of our existing home repair program and allow us to target low-income Rancho Cordova homeowners specifically and their needs. We estimate this funding will allow us to make significant repairs on three to four Rancho Cordova homes, offering these homeowners a hand up, not a hand out, as our program requires sweat equity and an affordable 0% interest repayment portion. I've been on many of these home repair projects, and I can attest that the basic repairs we undertake have a transformational impact on homeowners. A recent project we completed was for Della Reed. She's a low-income veteran's widow, and her home siding was split, and the roof was caving in. And Della told us she would sleep with her shoes on and a go-bag by the door because she was afraid a storm would bring her home down on top of her in the middle of the night. With nowhere to turn, Della was contemplating ending her life rather than facing homelessness as a senior, and I can't imagine how scary that might be. Through repairing Della's home, replacing her roof and other critical exterior repairs, we not only repaired her home, but also her hope. And it's amazing to see the change in demeanor and outlook on life in the folks whose lives we changed through our home repair program. Things that are basic repairs to us as a construction company is actually a very insurmountable problem for a lot of homeowners. We've been very successful in executing this program throughout the Greater Sacramento area, but haven't had an opportunity yet here in Rancho Cordova. So we're very excited through this program to grow our partnership with the city of Rancho Cordova, and to give priority to Rancho Cordova residents, low-income seniors, and veterans who are in need of these repairs.
Your time is up. Please wrap up your comments.
And that is all. Thank you very much. And if you have questions, I would be happy to answer.
Any questions, anyone?
And to our council member who enjoys swinging a hammer, we would absolutely love to have you come join us on this side with our volunteers.
That's a dangerous request.
That's right.
You got it. Sledgehammer, help.
We're fixing things.
Sledgehammer.
Very excited about that. You win.
If you need power tools or heavy equipment, that's me.
Yeah.
Okay, next steps, future city council meetings.
So we are nearing the end of the steps that we need to take.
This will be on consent next, right?
Yes, I plan on coming back on June 3rd. It will be on the consent calendar, since we've already discussed each item within the 18 pages of the document. And the final list will include the projects, as well as the funding amount and the duration, which for most of them is one year, but it will indicate if it's for longer than a one-year period. We will also notify all of the applicants whether or not they were approved, and the process that they should expect by the end of June. I don't believe there's any further action that we need to take this evening, but basically, you will see the final list based upon everything that you've talked about and made decisions on, on June 3rd, and it will be on consent.
All right, very good.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I just say thank you to Stacy and Daniel and everybody else? This is the most seamless of these we've ever had. So thank you for all your hard work. And I know your work just got started, so enjoy the rest of your summer trying to get all those contracts done.
Right. Thank you.
And we have one more item here for our city manager.
So, Council, first of all, thank you for acknowledging staff, and that they've done a great job in putting this together.
Good night to all the applicants.
One other quick comment. We had planned a council work session next Tuesday on the 28th. Thinking that if this has to overflow to a potential follow-up discussion, we have reserved our time. We don't need to do it, based on the accomplishments that we had tonight. So we would be canceling the May 28 council work session, and a formal notification will go out tomorrow.
You're all welcome to the St. John Vianney eighth-grade graduation, which is happening next Tuesday night.
Woo!
Were you going to miss it?
Oh, I wasn't coming to this meeting. No way.
Okay, just checking.
No way. And I did, Cyrus, we do have a little more diplomacy to work. St. John Vianney hosted their first middle school track meet, inviting a bunch of schools there from the region. We had one major competitor show up from the Elk Grove School District. And that middle school will be unnamed, but they have about 1,500 students at that school.
Nice.
Our middle school, St. John Vianney, would probably have, I don't know, 90 in middle school, some number like that. And we beat them badly in a track. I mean, significantly, hundreds of points. So a little more diplomacy, but it's really great to see that level of activity. We had a great partnership with the Cordova High School. And the idea that we could do that, because I'm not sure it's come to this room before, but RCA had a discussion, that we could do this at other elementary schools and the middle schools in Rancho Cordova, and hold track meets at Cordova, including activities over the summer. So it's a very exciting prospect, and I was glad to be able to sort of see it up close and personal. But it will result in some diplomatic issues.
We'll send some peacekeeping delegation to that school.
Well, I want to thank everyone who's here, and staff, thank you for all the hard work you've been doing. You guys have been really putting in some time, and we appreciate it very much. I know the people who are going to be receiving the help that they ask for, they're going to be appreciating even more. So thank all of you. Thank you, staff. Our meeting is adjourned.